Okay, good evening. I'd like to call today's meeting to order. It's Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can ask access the meeting via live stream, and our agenda is posted on the town's website as well as the school's website. In addition, the events will be brought rebroadcast on the local cable access channel. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practical. I also want to just mention that we will have a delegation portion of the meeting as we always do. When we get to that point, if you have any comments, please email them to Kelly Benevides. Her email is kellybenevides@akushnitschools.us, and during that portion of the meeting, she will read your comments. Alright, so we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. May I request a motion, please, on the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of August 4th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to also request another motion for the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of August 11th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, the approval of payroll and warrants. If my if I can request a motion there, please.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, moving right into delegation. Again, please send your comments to comments are welcome. Please send them to kellybenevides@akushnitschools.us. Any comments at this point? Okay, alright. We don't have any old business, so we're going to move into new business, and we'll begin with the superintendent's report. Dr. Bailey?
Yes, so we'll begin with the personnel report. You can see there is an attachment in your packet. We have hired a new math teacher at the middle school and a building-based substitute at the elementary school. As you recall, the building-based substitutes are a new position, and we're still struggling to get people to fill those positions. So we've hired one out of four. We received two resignations since our last meeting and one retirement that you can see there. Does anybody have any questions?
Question for you, Paula?
Yeah.
For the resignations, is that going to affect our coming back to school this coming next week?
No, we're actually in the process of interviewing, and it sounds like everything is going well with that. I don't anticipate any concerns with the resignations.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Do we do we exit interview when folks leave?
Not formally, but I do believe it's important to have an exit interview. One of the things that we did when I started here in the district was we really revamped a lot of the hiring procedures. So we really focused on the hiring, but I think that would be a great next step, actually. But we always do like to touch base with people as to why, you know, sometimes it has to do with geographic location, things like that, what's best for family.
We're going to move into the FF-CRA protocol, Family First Coronavirus Response Act.
Yep, so that is in the packet as informational. These are sheets in there that our staff, if anybody needs a leave of absence, I just wanted you to know all the benefits that we were following and included in there. And if you have any questions, can certainly check in with us. Mrs. Benevides really handles a lot of those requests, and thankfully, we really have not had a lot of requests, given the situation that we're in right now. So really proud of our staff for the work they return and the amazing work that they've done since returning. The next thing I have is the substitute.
Excuse me, Paula?
Oh, yeah.
Question about this. Is this something that the school came up with, or the state, or the town? It says it looks like town, but is...
It's the town.
It's the town that came up with this? And did the administration have to agree to it? Because I know it's not for a vote.
Well, it's like the regulations. I know, Mrs. Benevides, if you want to speak to this, but we're following the FF-CRA regs.
That's the law that the government put into place that's only in effect until December 31st.
Okay.
So we just have to compile all the information and put it into one format for the inclusion of students.
So this is standard across the entire state? Okay, just to clarify for people watching.
And any other questions on that before I move on to the next item? Okay. Substitute teacher pay rate and substitute custodian pay rate discussion?
So this, I wanted I wanted to present this tonight. There's definitely a shortage of substitute teachers, and I know many districts, neighboring districts, have increased their substitute rate of pay during the pandemic. As a matter of fact, Fairhaven nearly doubled theirs. So based on the comparable substitute pay that we were able to find out from many districts, we are making a recommendation to increase. Currently, for non-certified teachers, it's $85 a day. We'd like to bring that up to 90. I'm sorry, we'd like to bring that up to 100. And for certified substitute teachers, we'd like to bring it from 90 to $125 per day. So there's two separate issues here. One is the substitute teachers, and then we're also trying to stay competitive with our substitute custodians. And in order for us to stay competitive, we're making a recommendation that they move from minimum wage to an increase of 1417 per hour, as the 1417 is the entrance pay on the scale for custodians. And this, again, will assist our district in both cases in staying competitive and trying to get people in these positions.
I'm going to open it up for discussion. Any questions?
Do we have a sense of, so for Haven, I know is maybe more than what we're proposing, but do we have a sense from other districts where we are in terms of that scale with our recommended changes?
Yes, I think we're right in line with New Bedford, although New Bedford has different schools that have different rates. But according to the districts that we did look at, this would be in line. 126.
So I'm sorry, so just so I understand, so the rates you're proposing would would put us in alignment with aligned with New Bedford, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't be on the high end.
Okay.
At all, but it would be competitive compared to where we are now. If I were a substitute and I was working, I would go to the districts that pay more money. So this would keep us competitive, although the timing during the pandemic, the recommendation is that we increase it, look at it once the pandemic is over, but at least during the pandemic, move the rates up.
Paula, is this the same as the pay for the permanent substitutes? I think, were there two of them?
Do you mean the building-based subs?
Yeah, is that what it was? Yeah.
Yep, so this is different. This the substitute teachers is more of an on-call position. Like, they could be called on a day's notice, or in the morning, "We need you today." The building-based substitutes are permanent. Every day, they come to work, so their pay scale is different, and the benefits are different.
And are they, okay, so so they're compensated better than this? Okay.
And we're still struggling.
Increasing it to the level where it became attractive to not have the permanent sub?
It's definitely more attractive to be a building-based sub. They have health benefits as well.
Okay.
It's just a very hard time right now during a pandemic to get substitutes.
And are you confident that increasing to this level will allow us to get those substitutes?
It will keep us competitive. I'm not sure that we're going to get the people we need, but at least we'll be at the same place that most other districts are at. Right now, we're we're off. We're also saying that this will be temporary, or we could revisit it, but during the pandemic, I'm recommending substitute teachers, the rate be increased, and that for substitute custodians, we're saying that we'd like to increase it permanently to stay competitive.
And just to be black and white about this, when would the pandemic end? Are we giving a date to this? Is it January 31st, and then we'll revisit again, or is it until the state lifts the?
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, I think we all wish we had a crystal ball when this
Right, I was just wondering.
But I do think that while we're in this situation where we have all these different accommodations in place for children and teachers, the safety concerns, like you said, regulations from the state, I would say that while we're in the hybrid model, or the remote model, that I would consider during the pandemic.
Okay.
And that we'll keep this in place and revisit it when we need to.
And is this increase going to be taken from the COVID money from the town? Would this be considered for this, or is it going to come out of our budget, the school budget?
I would say both. I'll be talking more about that later on.
Okay.
But the town's money and the school's grants money that we are accessing, they are only through December 30th, 2020. So anything incurred after that, we're going to have to find money for elsewhere.
That's why I was asking about the date.
Right, so they expire. I just confirmed that with the Board of Selectment at their meeting tonight. I was there previously, and I'll have an update. But the 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 building-based subs, certainly, we have those written into our reopening grant, and that's through whatever costs incurred through from now until December 30th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. May I request a motion, please, to approve the substitute teacher pay rate and substitute custodian pay rate as discussed?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mrs. Downing, it's all the substitutes, correct? I just want to clarify the custodians as well. I didn't know if you wanted to do a separate vote?
Oh, I lumped them together, but I can do a separate.
Okay.
Okay. Kelly, will I need to do both over again, or? Okay. May I request another motion, please, to approve this substitute custodian pay rate as discussed?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the reopening plan update. I think that you'll be hearing from the district probably about things every month, and we'll get into further detail as the months go on with curriculum. Today, we wanted to focus on the actual hybrid model, the remote model, which is the learning management system of TECA. We do acknowledge that there's been concerns with the communication between the district and TECA. We've had trouble communicating with TECA, but, you know, we we believe it's because the sheer volume that they're trying to deal with with all the districts signing on, but I I can't speak for them. But we have reached out to them numerous times to try to help our families get the information that they need. We've followed all of their directions and put the information out, and we understand that there is a sense of frustration from families because they didn't either a receive the emails from TECA. But we still want to work with our families and help them, so that's what we've been doing. I want to thank Mrs. Stoffel, our Director of Curriculum, who's really been instrumental in helping with the LMS, the TECA program. But our teachers have returned. We've been doing professional development. And just for anybody who is listening, what's typical for PD at the beginning of the year is anywhere from one to three days. So the fact that we're planning PD for 12 days in a row with our teachers has been, I think, a gift for our teachers, especially with all of the new curriculum, with the new hybrid model, all of the COVID protocols. And I will say that our teachers, the effort that I see people putting in has just been remarkable. So I want to thank everyone. Particularly, I want to thank our curriculum director and principals, who have really been managing a lot of the PD each day. And right now, if I could have Mrs. Stoffel come up to the podium to give us an overview of the hybrid model, and then what we plan to do is not get deep into the curriculum tonight. We will start to get deeper into the curriculum starting next month. We thought it was more important to give you an update about the hybrid model and the digital learning platform, because this is so new for everyone. So thank you, Mrs. Stoffel.
Oh, well, thank you, Dr. Bailey, and hello, everyone. This is the first time I've been able to see you all in person. Well, not all of us, but the school committee members. So it's very nice to meet you, and it has been a privilege to work with the Akushnit community. So let's take a look at our update. Oops, a little too far. So this overview is going to give us a snapshot of the curriculum that has been purchased by the district thus far. It's going to help you understand from a the faculty perspective, the professional development that they are experiencing. And to Paula's point, it is 12 days of professional development when we are normally gifted with maybe one or two days. We will also take a look at the reentry overview from a student standpoint and really understand how we, as a community, are going to provide uninterrupted student learning for our for our kids. So first, we're just going to quickly take a look at the curriculum. So on the screen, you see the curriculum that has been purchased by the district thus far to be implemented in the 2020-2021 school year. For math, we've purchased Envisions, which is for kindergarten through eighth grade. I'm very excited about the Envisions math, because it's going to allow us that spiraling curriculum from year to year. Our students are going to have a consistent and ongoing learning experience with this platform. For ELA, we have My View and My Perspectives, and that's for Ford Middle School for grades five through eight. We do need to look at curriculum for the elementary school. And in my meetings and working with the faculty, I will be collaborating with them on the platform that we will be deciding upon. For intervention, we're using Success Maker. For math and for reading, it's really game-based and hopefully very engaging for our students. For science, we have Amplify Science, and I honestly think that Ms. Ruggeri is as excited about Amplify Science as I am. It's hands-on kits, it's labs, it's absolutely fantastic, and our science teachers have already met and mapped out their learning expectations for the year. So very excited about science at Ford Middle School. Again, we need to look at science curriculum for the elementary school as well. For reading, hopefully, that you are familiar with Light Sale, and it has become a part of our practice for summer reading. If not, we will have an opportunity to participate with Light Sale in the upcoming year as a supplemental to our reading program and an additional resource for our faculty. And I also put up there No Red Ink. This is an exciting collaboration between our grade eight civics and writing teacher. We are going to pilot this program and see how successful it is in, again, grade eight civics and writing. To me, this is a starting point for Akushnit. We have a lot of work to do, but I'm very excited about the curriculum we're moving forward with. So our professional development has been put into four categories that you can see: our welcome workshops, our student services workshops, the teaching and learning, and our housekeeping. We're trying to find a good balance between those being on the screen and in our Zoom meetings for professional development, and also providing our faculty the time they need to implement all the information that they're taking in. And I must say that our faculty is participating, paying attention, asking questions, and we are asking quite a lot from them. So kudos to our faculty. So let's take a look at what the professional development looks like. And Mr. Oliver, would you enter on in there? So in planning, the faculty has this spreadsheet available to them. Each day is tabbed at the bottom. So, Mr. Oliver, would you take a look at tomorrow for September 9th? So we're about midway through our faculty development, and every day, again, we're trying to find a good balance between being on a Zoom, having to take in information, learn a new curriculum platform, learn a new technology, and also providing the time to immediately take what you're learning and implement it in your practice. So again, this has been a lot for our faculty, and they have been nothing but extraordinary in their participation. One that I'm very excited about is our digital learning, which tomorrow is our day three. The faculty reached out and said, hey, we just need more time with Google Meet. It's going to be a big part of our platform moving forward for our remote kids. So our two computer teachers said, hey, let's offer them some more PD tomorrow. So there's an optional Zoom meet tomorrow to end off our digital learning day. Again, the community is working together and communicating needs, and hopefully finding the time to take everything that they're learning and implement it in their practice. And, Mr. Oliver, would you go to September 15th, please? We've tried to keep the last two days before our hybrid model starts, September 15th and 16th open for faculty. In addition to that, we will be providing our COVID testing on those days as well. So we've put up a schedule to make sure that our COVID testing is orderly, and we don't want to overwhelm our 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 people that will be here helping us. So the 15th and 16th are open days. So now let's take a look at, from a student perspective, how we are going to provide uninterrupted student learning regardless of where our students are, whether they're onsite or at home. Oh, yeah, advanced. Thanks. So there are three essential elements to our hybrid model moving forward. One, our teacher websites, Google Classroom, and student learning guides and expectations. Let's take a look at each. So as far as the teacher websites go, before we click into AES and FMS, I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to take a peek at these teacher websites yet, but I want to acknowledge Kyle Gallivan, who's our grade eight social studies teacher. He helped us with creating all of the teacher websites. He is, he exemplifies all that is good with the teaching profession and is an asset to our community. So I just want to take a shout out to Kyle Gallivan before we enter in. So the teacher websites were created and provided for the teachers to minimize any work that they need to do with these. We wanted to provide them something that would help rather than cause any more work that they needed to do. So these teacher websites have seven pages for the elementaries, one for each content area. We'll take a peek in just a minute. They also show us the Massachusetts State standards, so there's no confusion about which standards we'll be teaching this year. There's also the hybrid calendar located front and center on our teacher websites to aid our families with any ongoing things happening in the classrooms. And one important thing that teachers did today is they added their student access to Google Classrooms. So basically, these teacher websites are one-stop shopping for our students. They can take a look at this teacher website and go right into where they need to learn. We worked this morning, 8:30 a.m., we were all on our Zooms and walking around the buildings, helping with how teachers could edit their websites. So I'm very excited that these were launched today, and a lot more work will be ongoing, but we are in a very good place with our communication for our families. And Chris, would you take a look into AES? Let's click on the grade one. And if you would go into teacher one, I absolutely love what Mrs. Pierre did today. So you can see on her welcome page, she has a little message to her students. The hybrid calendar is down below. And, Mr. Oliver, if you would scroll up one moment, would you please click on English Language Arts? So Mrs. Pierre is a grade one teacher. On her English Language Arts page, she has her standards for pre-K 5. She also has access to the Google Classrooms that her students will be using for learning, along with, yes, would you please scroll down as well? Each Google Classroom has a calendar, and Mrs. Pierre will be adding that calendar in the coming weeks. So each content area is formatted the same way. Mr. Oliver, just, yep, click on mathematics. So here you have access to Mrs. Pierre's, am I saying her name right? Somebody, please correct me if I'm not. It's correct. Okay. Again, for math, Mrs. Pierre's students will have access to the Google Classroom. The math standards are very visible. And, Chris, the one I love the best is the About Me page. We just did a little bit of PD with Mr. Gallivan on bit mojis, and Mrs. Pierre put an absolutely adorable welcome bit emoji of herself on her About Me page. And if you would just scroll down a little bit farther, with her contact information. So well done, Mrs. Pierre. I just absolutely love this. So again, this is the one-way communication going home to our families to help them understand access for their students. And, Mr. Oliver, if you would go into the FMS site, that would be fantastic. So Ford Middle School's website, teacher websites, look a little bit different. Mr. Oliver, when you get a chance, if you would just click on, scroll down a little bit. So you can see that they've opted to make grade-level pages. So, Mr. Oliver, if you would go into grade eight, they're all consistent, but let's take a look at grade eight. So if you are in grade eight, you see the welcome message from the team. You see, again, the Google Calendar. And if you scroll up, you can see each content area has a, so just click on English Language Arts. Yep, nope, right there. Thank you. So each content area has the standards on the welcome page. You can take a look at those. Excellent. And let's go back to the grade eight page. Now, Mr. Oliver, let's let's go ahead over to civics and government, and you can click there, and you can see the standards yet again. But let's take a look as well at the teacher sites. So if you would click on the carrot to the, yep, and let's click on Section 1, please. So if you're in Section 1 for civics and government, you can see here that you have access to the Google Classroom and the Google Calendar attached to that classroom. So when this teacher posts any assignments, it will be visible on this page on this site so that students can see what's assigned, tests coming up, projects to complete, any essential information will be automatically posted on that site as it pops up in Google Classroom. And, Mr. Oliver, just to kind of round us off, would you please click on the About Us page? Because I also think this is really well done. So here's a bit emoji of all your teachers, and as I look through it, it just makes me smile. I don't know how they figured out how to do these bit mojis so well, but they really do look like faculty. It's fantastic. And it's rather disarming. I love it. I think it's fantastic. And it's rather disarming. I love it. I think it's fantastic. All right. So if we would go back to the presentation, please. And again, just a shout out to our faculty today. They spent their morning editing these sites and playing with them and learning about them. And I think they've done a fantastic job. So we are now, it is my understanding, a G-suite school. We'll be using Google Classroom as our learning management system for learning. And at AES, every elementary teacher has one classroom for every content area taught, which is a total of five Google Classrooms. At FMS, there's one classroom for every section taught, which is a total of five Google Classrooms. So student learning guides. I'm very excited about the student learning guides because as a parent myself, I'm hopeful that they will be helpful to all parents out there. If you can think of them as a lesson plan for your child, what does your child need to learn in a particular lesson? We have student learning guides at the elementary school and at the middle school. We're going to take a look at them in a little bit of detail in just a second. But why do we have student learning guides? They offer us clear communication, continuity of instructional delivery. It also promotes student ownership of their learning, and it promotes family partnership. Hopefully, you will see that as these student learning guides are posted to Google Classroom, any parent can ask their child, what did you learn today at school? And they will have plenty to show you. So let's take a look. Chris, if you would click on the here. So these student learning guides are available in several different locations. I just thought this was the easiest way to take you in. And faculty has received professional development on this. So, Chris, if you would go to the instruction page, please. Up there, yep, and then click on student learning. So the community and the faculty can find the student learning guides right on this page. And, Chris, if you would click on AES Student Learning Guides. And let's just click on grade one again. Why not? So we just talked about how, at the elementary school, every teacher has one Google Classroom for every content area that they teach. They will use this student learning guide as a means to tell students what their lesson is. So they will be posting this student learning guide to the Google Classroom so that students can understand, by the end of this lesson, you will be able to, and the objectives will be listed. Their students will have a check-in relatively about five minutes to help the teacher understand where the learning gaps are or where she needs to start learning or where he needs to address immediately. There's going to be something called an "I do," which is a mini lesson. There's a portion of the lesson called a "we do," which is group work. And then a portion of the lesson called a "you do," which is the independent portion of the lesson. There will be an exit ticket to provide some formative assessment to help the teacher understand if the information was understood and learned. And then homework is visible in the box on the corner. And we are recommending no more than five to 10 minutes of homework per lesson for our students. So this is for grade one. You can also see the standards in the boxes up above. Any resources, materials, and tools will be available. And also, according to our wonderful DESI guidance, we need to be providing enrichment and review with every lesson. So this is just a little bit of the faculty expectations. This will be deleted when the student learning guides are posted to Google Classroom. However, I am excited about the enrichment and the review, a little bit to a little bit more. And that's the differentiation piece that DESI is mandating. And, Mr. Oliver, if you wouldn't mind clicking on the middle school, and let's take a look at those student learning guides. Pick a grade, whatever grade you want. There we go. Let's go into grade seven. So you'll notice the student learning guides are the same format. Again, consistency of practice. However, the wording is a little bit more grade-level appropriate. Instead of an "I do," we have a mini lesson. Instead of "we do," it's group work. And instead of a "you do," it's independent work. The time is a little bit extended. The homework is 10 minutes. But there's still review, and there's still enrichment. And again, the standards are visible for every lesson that is taught. I am very hopeful that this facilitates communication with families in helping them help their students as we navigate this unprecedented time. All right. We're going to go back to the presentation. And just expectations that have been communicated to our faculty every school day. Student learning guides will be posted to Google Classroom. And at FMS, we have the same expectation, one student learning guide per section per day. Clarification at the bottom. In-person and remote students will follow the same schedule. End lessons every day. All students, regardless of where they are, whether they're onsite or whether they're home, will participate in uninterrupted student learning. That is our goal. And, whoops, and coming in October, we will have a much deeper dive into curriculum. But for now, you have a nice idea of what we've been working on since we started, August 31st. Questions? Yeah?
Couple of questions for you. With the pages for all the grades, who's overseeing? Is it the principals that are overseeing to make sure that the teachers are posting what's needed for the day for the students?
The student learning guides?
Yes.
So those are being posted in Google Classrooms, and administrators and myself are co-teachers in every Google Classroom. Good question. Yes?
What's the expectation for, I'll say, time on learning? For the cohorts that are in the classroom on a daily basis?
So when you say time on learning, do you mean, can you just... Because the expectation is that students participate in the entire school day. You know, students understand that they are in school from the time that, you know, the normal school day, they're involved in school.
Sure. I would imagine, like, the time that the kids are spending in school is probably, you know, more effective and more efficient in terms of the delivery of the curriculum, right, than being at home. And so I was just thinking of those two days that they're going to be, you know, some are four days, right? But I'm just thinking in terms of just a day. I'm trying to think of the day.
What does the day look like for a student, say, who's remote?
So all, like, I'm just saying, all the transferring and then, as far as, like, you know, those things are nice, the "I do," "we do," but they've got to do those for every topic, I would imagine. Like, where's the time that's going to take to do all this stuff? And how much time are the kids actually learning on a daily basis, like, getting that instruction?
So I think it's situational. I think that's a great question, and I believe it's situational. I think it's going to look different in every grade that we have here. And it's also something that we're going to better understand once we start. The expectation is that our students are participating in every lesson every day, regardless if they're at home or if they're onsite. There's also an expectation that students are viewing their classrooms, and there's some component of live synchronous instruction as well.
Okay. Do the families know that yet? So, for example, like, we're... Are we starting, is it September 16th, next Wednesday? So has there been any communication to the families, like, this is where you go, this is what September 16th is going to look like? This is what the expectation is when the kids are supposed to be online, where they're supposed to, you know, complete work, that sort of thing?
So I am understanding that that's going to be a part of our open house tomorrow night?
Or the 10th?
Is it not? It's on the 10th, September 10th. Sorry. I'm getting my days. Labor Day really messed me up this week.
I'm sorry. Has open house been announced?
Today.
What's that? The principals are saying yes.
Yep. Today I got an email.
It was today?
Today.
Okay, for Thursday? All right. So they're supposed to get information on... So families are going to get information Thursday night? Where they have to plan their schedules for their families within six days, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could just add, to go back to your question a little bit, one of the expectations is while teachers are doing direct instruction, that the children at home will have access to that direct instruction. They may not have the cameras on the entire day because we don't want kids... There might be some independent work where they, once they saw the lesson, they understand it. You know, they're going to check back in for the next... The teacher's going to have a very rigid schedule so that the children at home can follow that same schedule at home that they're following in school. And again, none of our educators went to school to teach in a hybrid model. So I will give everyone credit. This is a heavy lift. This is different. But I will say that our teachers have been outstanding in terms of, you know, having an open mind and really learning all of this new way of doing business. And we're going to tweak things and pivot and, you know, make adjustments as necessary. So if something is not working, as we've said to the teachers, communication is the key all around, whether it's parents to teachers, parents to principals, teachers to principals, myself. We just need to know what the issues are so that we can work together to make it easier for everyone.
Yeah, I just thought that, you know, a lot of families are going to have to maneuver quickly because working families are not going to... Somebody else is going to be managing their kids, so they probably need to plan ahead for what that's going to look like in terms of scheduling. I've heard from several families who just, hey, I'm concerned about what that's going to look like. Haven't heard anything. And I didn't want it to be kind of, you know, more like the TECA rollout. And then I had a question here. I noted this. The, in your presentation, mentioned that there's going to be COVID testing at the schools. Is that accurate?
I'm going to get to that on other matters.
All right. So I'll hold that question then.
I'm sorry. Did you have another one? Another question?
No, my only other question was, but I don't think you were going to get into this, but my other question was in regards to LightSale because we had gotten notices that that was supposed to, we were supposed to have access to that. And that was part of the summer reading, like, the kids were supposed to have that, and it never happened. So I was just concerned about if that was...
So LightSale was available for our students.
Oh, it was?
Our free subscription to it expired. I believe it was August 31st. And we are in the process of integrating the LightSale platform with the new licenses that we have purchased.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Good question.
Just one quick question about instruction. So the idea is that there will be some lessons, as you outlined in the guidebook, that maybe those at home are watching virtually live. So there are students in school participating in that lesson, and there may be some at home participating. And then in some cases, it may be that maybe there's a video recording that those at home are going to watch. So it's not going to be consistent. There's going to be some variety in terms of the method being used for those at home. Is that correct?
Yeah. So one example that might look different is if there's physical education and the teacher is doing a FISED lesson outside because the weather is nice, and that's what we're encouraging to happen for FISED is outside. The children will, the students will be given a choice board, and the teachers will have choices on that board for the students to be able to complete at home. So they're still completing assignments and the number of hours within their day at home. Those students will have similar opportunities when they're in school with their cohort. That's one example of how it could look different. A video could be played. If the teacher posts a video, they could post it. They could show it. Again, the teachers have a lot of academic freedom, if you will, and autonomy to really run the classroom the way they see fit. Our teachers are really the experts. So I think we're going to have to experiment and see what works for the children in their classroom, what's not working well. And I would just say to the folks at home, for those families that are listening, if this... And we're going to be in touch with our students as well. One of the things that we talked about after each phase was doing an exit ticket, a survey, if you will, to check in with families and students. How is this working for you? I know last year during the spring, I was actually on the phone with students at the middle school, asking them questions about their learning at home. This is supposed to be, the idea is, this is supposed to be much more robust, more synchronous, uninterrupted in comparison to what we did in the spring, which, again, we did our best with very little notice. But we will be surveying everyone so that we can continue to strengthen the model and get better at this.
Thanks.
Do you have a question, Craig?
Yeah, thanks.
So I understand the classroom portion of the hybrid model. The at-home one, and I'm just guessing here, children have to be online, let's say, at 8 o'clock to do their attendance. And then they need to be at a location until 2:15 or whatever time they leave for the middle school or 3:25 when they leave for the elementary school. So parents need to prepare that they're in one location. They can't drive to several locations halfway in between because children will miss classes. Is that correct?
Yeah. So we're encouraging families to have a location at home where children can actually have a workspace. They can be in one space so that they can turn on, go according to the schedule that the teacher outlines for them. We understand that there may be times where they have to stay with someone else for daycare purposes. But if they can have access to their computers and online, that's what we're recommending, a workspace. I noticed that one of the issues right now going on in the country is now there's a shortage, not just of toilet paper, there's a shortage on desks. So it leads me to believe that during this pandemic, people are purchasing furniture and desks because a lot of students are working at home because that's what's happening across the country.
Yeah. My children's workspaces are better than the ones that I have in my office.
Yeah. I mean...
I would just, I guess my point before was maybe, I think that needs to be communicated a little bit with the families. I think they're a little bit in the dark about what's happening eight days from now.
Okay.
And just to add to that, I think, I think I was caught off guard today with the open house on Thursday. So, and I don't know why two days' notice, but I do think in the future, we need to try to be a little bit better about providing more notice to families, right? To say there's going to be an open house because people work, people have whatever.
But it's virtual, right? It's not a...
It's virtual, and if they can't access...
But that's besides the point. You know, people have stuff going on. They need to make arrangements. They want to attend, and I think we just need to do a better job and give more notice than two days.
Yeah, and the virtual might present some issues, too. If you've got multiple kids, particularly in different schools, you might get, you know, a different message and...
Can we make sure it's recorded and reposted in case there are parents who can't make a live, virtual open house?
So the elementary principal, Mr. Johnson, is saying that there's portions that are definitely recorded. A lot of the questions that you had in terms of the schedule, what it looks like on September 16th, all of that is prerecorded. At the elementary school, my understanding is that the teachers are conducting a live Zoom meeting with their class. And at the middle school, it's prerecorded by grade level, and people should be able to access that if they cannot make it. If you do get any phone calls, I would highly recommend that they call the school and speak to the administration at the school if they have questions because that's the best place to get the right answers, is directly calling the school office.
And I have a question, maybe a comment about LightSale. So, and as a parent, we've had some issues trying to figure out how to use LightSale. My understanding is that the lunch code perhaps is the login for...
That's what I understand.
And so I don't know that lunch code is intuitive to people. And then I'm also worried, because we've been trying to get ahold of the right person to get the code. So are they equipped? Are they going to, are people going to get sent to our lunch folks to provide the code? And are they equipped to answer those questions when they come in? Because I've, we've been totally confused by how to utilize it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is new for everyone. It's our technology department who is issuing those codes. We have received emails, and every time we get an email, we respond. I don't know if Mr. Oliver is available to come to the podium, but I know... but I know he's been dealing with lunch codes and, and such.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Good evening, members of the committee, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, so I agree with you. The, the lunch codes are not very intuitive. What, we're looking at a couple of things, um, especially for our younger students, but everything's happening so, so quickly and so fast. Uh, one of the things we're looking at is clever, which is a single sign-on product, uh, which uses QR codes, um, that the students would have to be able to log in. Um, just waving it in front of the camera on the Chromebook. Those are some of the things we're looking at. What my hope is, all the teachers will have access to the lunch codes. So as we're, we're actually starting our rollout of our Chromebooks tomorrow here at the middle school, grades, uh, five through eight. So as we're go, as we're going through those, uh, we're gonna, uh, remind the parents, let them know, you know, if they don't, if I can, I'll offer them up the code right then and there. We're gonna have a good group of us, I believe. Uh, Mrs. Sylvia has, uh, got a lot of staff to volunteer because it's gonna be over a four-hour period. We've been working extremely hard getting close to four hundred fifty to five hundred Chromebooks ready to go and ready to be deployed tomorrow. Now, those are the ones that we do have. Um, but yeah, I do agree with you. I think we can do better, uh, with the lunch codes. Um, because me, uh, just myself, I've responded to probably about seventy-five emails in the past, probably forty-eight hours or so, or since last Thursday anyway. Looking parents, uh, TECA parents, looking to just log into their Chromebooks and be able to, to access that. So, yeah, I, and I definitely think it's gonna be a learning curve, especially for our, our K and our one students that are just, you know, picking these up and getting into the school and getting into the process for the first time. But, uh, yeah, we can definitely, I think we, there's definitely room for improvement there.
Oh, Chris, do, do all the students who didn't have Google, um, sign-ons, do they all have them now?
Correct, yes. So up until, uh, COVID took place in March.
What, through second grade or third grade or something?
Correct, yes. It was just through, um, I think, second grade and up or third, it might even have been third grade and up with some select second grade teachers. Because it was more about, we really didn't have the PD for the teachers on it for Google Classroom and for using, um, Google. But now that we've had so much time and we've been thrown and thrust into, um, you know, Google and remote learning, uh, with the pandemic, that now, uh, all students, grades K through eight will have, do have a Google login. That is correct.
And the parents know what the login is for every kid?
So, yes, as, so for the middle school, yes. For the TECA students, yes. Once we start deploying those, um, those Chromebooks at the elementary school, it'll be absolutely yes. Uh, but really, I think the first step for those, um, K and one students that have not, um, had access to Google before, I think we'll, we'll probably do some kind of integration with their teachers. So that'll be the first person they see, uh, during the school year. So I think it's really important that they, they'll, uh, the teachers will work with them. And then I'll also, I'm trying to figure out a way of some kind of mass communication to get, um, some kind of a mail merge, uh, with Aspen, our student management system, to be able to just individually email the parents, every parent, the username and password.
So, so the kids don't need the Google username in order to get into all the Google Classroom stuff?
So, yes.
Google Suite?
And that's what I, that's what I was saying. For, for K and one, yes, I think. And that's something that they're gonna learn about Google Classroom. They've, a lot of, a lot of our students, only a select few, and where my principals, correct me if I'm wrong, only a select few teachers up until this year have been using Google Classroom. We're now may, we're now saying, um, and I think, uh, Mrs. Stoffel kinda alluded to it. We're using Google Classroom. This is our learning management system here and the Akushanet Public Schools, and this is how, this is the road we're gonna be going down. So I think from where we're kinda staggered and scattered, I think we're really starting to take a more direct path, especially having a curriculum instruction assessment coordinator on board with us.
Right, so everybody on the, um, so regardless of, if, if they don't have a Chromebook, they still need that sign-on.
That is correct.
Okay, and, and so have all the families gotten that yet? Do you know?
So, no. They, K and one have not, absolutely not. Um, anyone that was.
Is that necessary for next week?
It's not necessary until their student starts school. Um, so, yeah.
Which is the sixteenth.
Exactly. And honestly, I'll be quite honest with you, it's, it's logistics. There, there's so many, there's so many logistics in what's taking place right now between the, the last minute with the communication with TECA, with them. And, and this is across, this is across the state. This isn't unique to Akushanet. Um, it's just been, the logistics is just, it's amazing, the integration between all these different software platforms. Um, I know someone brought up LightSale, Google Classroom. There's a lot more, um, different platforms. Uh, Amplified Science, I believe, that we're looking at doing. So ultimately, the ultimate goal, the long-range path here is we're looking to do single sign-on for everything. So one account will eventually, that, that's, that's the goal. Um, I hope to get there this year. Uh, the goal is one account, one password, well, because I know, I, I'm a parent. Uh, I'm, I'm frustrated sometimes too with my own students that one account will get you into all, I mean, I'm sorry, one username and password will get you into all your accounts. Make it easier for the students, but also make it a lot easier for the parents.
Okay, so I, I guess my line of question was just, I was just concerned with the, the kids that have never had Google Classroom access.
Sure.
Like, the, the kids who have had that for years, I mean, they're probably fine, right? But just the nuance on it, yeah.
Um, Mr. Oliver, you may wanna clarify that, starting September sixteenth, because we had to distribute a good number of Chromebooks to TECA students, which was not an original expectation. We have not received over fifty Chromebooks back from last spring. Uh, not all of our students will have Chromebooks on September sixteenth. So our teachers are preparing packets at the elementary level. I don't know if you wanna speak about which grade levels, um.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, so.
I just wanna make it clear to people.
Absolutely, Dr. Bailey. So like I said, tomorrow, we're distributing our Chromebooks, K through eight tomorrow. Um, ultimately, if our, our shipment of four hundred, um, yeah, five through eight.
Five through eight.
Five through eight. Ultimately, if our shipment of Chromebooks had arrived, um, on time, but they're back audited across the world right now, um, we're looking at probably early October for those. Um, I did send out a survey, a technology survey. Some of you probably got that last week, um, at letting the parents know of elementary, uh, uh, school, school-aged children that we'd like to try to still go digital. If they're in a, um, you know, if they're in a pickle and they don't have any device at all, we're willing to work with them to try to get them a device just until the, um, you know, until our, our major audit comes in in October. Um, because, let's face it, uh, it, in March, we loaned out about a hundred fifty Chromebooks. So that, the rest of them, even though some parents, they did double up, you know, that might have been a work device they were letting their student use, that's not what we want. We want a true one-to-one solution here. But until we can get there, until we can get our shipment of Chromebooks in, you know, we're doing what we can. So with the survey results that are received, we're gonna be looking at trying to reach out to these individual families, these individual, uh, parents, to see if we can get them an emergency loan of Chromebook just until the major shipment comes in because they don't have, um, uh, another device. That being said, some of the other things we're doing, we're really jumping through hoops here, trying to accommodate as many parents and families as possible. I'm actually working with Verizon. Um, and those parents that don't have it, and I've had probably about five or six parents reach out to me, uh, Krishna residents that don't have internet access or they have limited internet access. Uh, Verizon did, um, come to an agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, uh, with, with the state contract. And I am gonna be purchasing Verizon Jetpacks, 4G hotspots for those families that can prove a need for internet access. Because we want a level playing field. That, you know, that, that's what we want. We want all students on the same, same playing field.
And just so I'm clear, even if we get the four hundred Chromebooks, are we saying that we still will have a gap because of those that haven't been returned and the ones that we weren't planning for?
Good, good, no, absolutely not. The, at the end of the day, come middle, but by the time they all come in, every single grades K through eight will have a Chromebook. Every single student will have a Chromebook, including our TECA students. That was, uh, those have already been given out, our TECA students.
Chris, how many requests have we gotten, received for internet support?
Um, I would say somewhere in the ballpark of five right now. Um, but, you know, as a lot of, let's face it, a lot of families, as it gets closer to the start date, you know, they may, they may start to reach out more. But right now, right now, it's about five.
And just to remind folks that kindergarten and first grade will be here four days a week. We have arranged for our technology specialists to be in those classrooms, to really push in and start working with the younger children on the technology so that if we are in a situation where we have to pivot and go full remote, those kids will be in a better situation than they were last spring. We know that the younger children didn't do as well. Um, because it's hard, all this Google Classroom format, the platforms we're utilizing. Uh, we plan to do as much training as possible with our little ones. And, you know, this is, uh, this is new to the staff as well. And I just wanna give credit again. People are working extremely hard. This is the hardest model to pull off, is the hybrid model. Uh, remote, all remote would have been the easiest thing for us to do, but we know this is best for our kids, to get them in person as much as possible. And I will say that our community is so fortunate that our children have access to technology, to the internet. Um, I know in other communities, they struggled in the spring. They, you know, where we were, our teachers were complaining that one or two kids may not have showed up on a Zoom lesson. Other communities were lucky if they had one or two kids show up, but we had most of our class. So we're hoping that this new and improved model, we're just going to keep getting better, building our capacity as adults to service our children as best we can so that they get the best education possible.
The, um, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Senator, go ahead.
Will TECA and this new curriculum be linked to Aspen to show their grades on there?
No.
I, I don't think so.
No, TE, since TECA is completely separate, um, no, it will not tie into Aspen at all.
Okay.
Just a question. Uh, so the open house for AESs this week, what is the plan for Ford? Is there, yep.
Tomorrow.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if you, you wanna come up?
It's tomorrow, but it's all pre-recorded.
Okay.
Good. You can just put on the microphone.
It is entirely pre-recorded. The staff are putting together their videos today. The links will be sent out to the students' Gmail accounts beginning tomorrow night at six o'clock. You can view it tomorrow night. You can view it next week. You can view it two weeks from then. There, um, so it's only to the students so that it's not a public event.
Okay.
It's only to the students in those grade levels that can access those links for the open house. The question and answer section went out last week to submit, parents could submit questions that we could answer during that open house that was sent out via the one-call message last week. The link will be sent out tomorrow with the link to the YouTube videos that are private, only to the Akushanet community.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, just a couple of questions. Not sure who can answer them for me. Um, we keep talking about, um, the Zoom meetings that the teachers are on, but then we were talking about Google Meet. So are we doing both? Are parents gonna have to learn Google Meet because we're so familiar with Zoom or how is that working?
I'm gonna see what the answer is, Chris.
Either one of us.
I'm gonna give this back to you.
Thank you.
Help you out a little bit here. So, great question, Sarah. And Chris, please jump in because, um, this is a, is a situation that we're trying to resolve as well. So Zoom, um, is not the, we want to be a G-Suite school. So therefore, we'd like.
That's Google.
We would like to use Google Meet. Once you go into Google Classrooms, right directly on that front page is a meet for the entire class to join. So we feel that that is the most intuitive, simple way for our entire community, teachers, students, and families to access the links, one-stop shopping again. Um, we have, uh, we are going to be purchasing their enterprise account, which gives us a much broader, which gives us a little bit more access and features. Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, so what Google realizes is that Zoom was absolutely, um, on top of them with the video conferencing piece, uh, of, you know, since COVID started. So Google has now trying to, surprisingly, they're, uh, or not surprisingly, they're really catching up now to Zoom. And while, uh, G-Suite for education is a free platform for any public K-12 school system, it's a free platform. However, there are some limitations to the, the free version. So what Google has done is they've created an enterprise version that will give us more functionality across all the applications, across Meet, across Google Drive, Google Classroom. So, and one of those things is that it gives us more capabilities with Meet, with Google Meet, which will have, be able to do breakout rooms, um, like Zoom has. There's more functionality. It's gonna look a lot like, a lot more like Zoom. Um, really, they're, they're just going after what Zoom has, has already created. Because right now, especially, there's already been a couple of versions. But back in March, if you were to use Google Meet, uh, the whole layout was just, you couldn't see everyone at once.
No, it's very confusing.
It's, it's very confusing. Um, so they've definitely come out with some newer, uh, versions. There's some extensions, some Google extensions, um, that we're looking at pushing out as well. Um, but yeah, ultimately, we're looking at going with, um, the enterprise edition of Google to make it a little more streamlined, excuse me, a little more streamlined, give us a little more functionality. Um, and the other thing too is that, uh, school districts that I've spoken to, as, as Zoom has lift, is starting to do away with the forty-five-minute cap, um, for education, that, that you're looking at, you know, I've heard some school districts anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five thousand dollars to get licensing for Zoom, uh, enterprise licensing for Zoom. So.
So just to set expectations for parents, they probably will be toggling between Google Meet and Zoom in the beginning until everything goes Google Meet.
Oh, I think the expectation with the district, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we're, we're pushing Google Meet right from the start. Right from the start, we're pushing Google Meet.
Thank you. Um, and then one other question, and I think this is for Carrie. Um, with the new curriculum that we've received, the math curriculum, um, that is included. We are still trying to work, and I know I'm beating a dead horse.
Please.
But we're still trying to work for the Algebra II for our eighth graders. So we're in line with all the other middle schools in our area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
So all these assignments are gonna be web-based? There's no paper?
No, just the, the, um, instructional delivery will be web-based for those students that are remote. But there will be paper and pencil, um, activities and lots of hands-on learning as well. Absolutely.
But the, uh, I had a question. The G-Suite and, um, if we're having those, like, the open house film, uh, videos, it, they're gonna need that Google username and ID to, to access that, correct?
So for the open house, and Mr. Oliver, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we are able to provide all videos without any restrictions on them.
Yeah, so to answer your question, Mr. Tubbs, that's just for the middle school.
Alright, great. Cool.
I'm gonna put a little bit of recommendation for, because there are some paper and pencil things that are going on that's gonna happen in the next, uh, in the next couple of months. Um, parents that don't have scanners, they use their phone as JPEGs. And I know for a fact that they would send like twenty-seven JPEGs to their teacher to look at. I think if we just did a quick little tutorial or maybe a YouTube video on how to scan with your phone, like Notes actually scans one PDF.
Right.
I think that would be really helpful to parents, just in case they don't have a professional scanner or photocopy machine.
So to that point, hopefully, we've done enough professional development and the professional development and support will be ongoing into the start of the school year. That's why we have Google Classroom, so that students can turn in assignments on that plat, that platform and mitigate the need to scan an email. We're really hoping that students will not be scanning and turning in any assignments and utilizing Google Platform for a very simple, one-click process.
Huh.
Yeah. It's good.
Excellent.
It's gonna be good, guys. Hang in there. It's gonna be good.
Alright, any other questions, members? Okay, thank you for that update and well done.
Thank you. Okay, then, the next thing we have on the agenda is a medical plan overview. I would ask, uh, Ms. Bettencourt to please, uh, come to the podium and present. That, uh, we know that a lot of families right now have a lot of questions. What if somebody tests positive? Uh, all these scenarios. We've been working very closely with, uh, DPH, DESI, uh, uh, local Board of Health, with Chief Gallagher. So we've had a lot of input into this. And I know that Ms. Bettencourt's been working very closely with our school nurse, Rose Monte, um, as well as our, uh, school physician. But she will be going over medical protocols during COVID so that everyone is clear on what. so that everyone is clear on what we're doing when things happen. And I just want to also say thank you for taking the extra time prior to the meeting to take a tour of the buildings. You saw that we have a separate area being made for the nurses' office, in both buildings, actually. And accommodations are being put in place, so, thank you.
So to keep in line with the Google, I am not a Google person. I am learning, which is why I don't have my pretty colors in my slides, because I'm still old-school PowerPoint. But they have promised me I will be Google proficient this year, so. I just wanted to do a quick overview. There's a lot of detail, the plan is very thick. It's basically a protocol for every possible scenario. But what I want to give you is a little bit of a snapshot and then a lot of time that we can have for questions. So I just wanted, you know, in addition to those of us in this room, for families to know, how are we handling different scenarios as they come up in the building? Yeah, I tried that first. Thanks. So we cannot hammer this home loud enough. The three most important things that we need from everybody as far as prevention are mask-wearing, social distancing, and regular hand washing and hand sanitizing. We are starting pretty much every conversation with those three things. That is our best defense against keeping COVID out of our classrooms. All students will be required to practice these. We are already planning for our little ones that we know are going to struggle with keeping masks on and social distancing. We're, we're putting together resources every day. Our clinical staff is already working on providing those supports in the classroom, that education right in the classroom to groups of students. The other big piece that we really want to reiterate with families is that if kids are symptomatic and they have a fever or a cough or a sneeze, and I'm going to go through the list in a minute, we really, really need them to keep kids home. Just as, you know, you wouldn't send somebody in with the flu. We wouldn't want you to send your kids in with potentially, you know, COVID symptoms.
But, but maybe in the past, we would have sent our child to school with some of those symptoms. But we're in a different situation now.
So we ask that not only are families are monitoring our students, but that our staff are also monitoring themselves for any of these symptoms. It's a pretty extensive list. And on any given day, I think any of us could have these symptoms. But again, we want to look at them as a group of symptoms. So if you came in with just a little cough, we wouldn't be calling parents to send you home. You really would have to have a combination of symptoms for us to be alerted. I've gotten, I've gotten a lot of questions about loss of taste or smell. That has to be a new symptom. So this isn't something that you always have. This has to be something new, a new onset of, of loss of taste or smell. Again, if anybody has any of these symptoms, you know, we'll get into what, what do we do with testing? And how do we look at what level does this rise to, to be tested? And, and kind of the, the layers of that, so. So I have in the full overview, it's kind of a, I call it the cheat sheet. It's a quick reference sheet for kind of the different scenarios. And I thought this was a good starting point to have the conversation tonight. So I have it in four different columns. So if we look at kind of the event, so when somebody is symptomatic, where that happens, and then looking at if people get tested or not, what, what happens? So if somebody is symptomatic, if a student is symptomatic at home or a staff is symptomatic at home, again, we ask that you stay home. Again, we're not, we're not sure at that point if it's a communicable disease, if it's an allergy, if it's a cold. But we want to make sure that we side on the air, err on the side of caution, sorry. If a student or a staff person is symptomatic on the bus, a student on the bus, or a staff or student at school, we ask that they remain masked and they adhere to social distancing. The student will either be brought to the nurse, so the nurse will come and get the student. There will be a separate medical isolation room, which is a really yucky term for kids. It's a separate space in the nurse's office that's isolated from the normal traffic pattern in the nurse's office. That will be staffed. And again, as to Paula's point, we had to make some adjustments to some of the nursing spaces to allow for a separate room that kids could be isolated from the main nursing area. Parents will be called to pick students up. And it's going to be a little bit different than the common cold where, you know, a parent may say, oh, I'm in Boston. Can you just keep them comfortable, I'll get there when I can? In a COVID situation, parents are going to have, to have backup, to have somebody come as soon as possible to pick kids up from school. Sick kids will not be sent on the bus. That is a 100% absolute, they will not be sent on the bus. If a staff person is symptomatic at school, again, they should follow the normal procedure. If they can, immediately find coverage, whether it's a paraprofessional, maybe one of the specialists. They need to be relieved of their duties and then they need to go home. And again, if it's a cluster of symptoms, then we recommend that they should be tested. Questions on that first piece, Sarah?
We're offering testing here, I think you're going to get into it.
We're going to get to that, yep. Anybody else, questions on that? Okay, so when we're looking at testing, there's kind of three different categories. If somebody leaves here sick, gets tested, and the test results are negative, it's business as usual. Come back to school, no symptoms within 24 hours, just as we would with a cold or, you know, flu. And we go about our business. If somebody tests positive, that person needs to remain home, again, except to go get medical care. They need to continually monitor their symptoms, notify the school that they have been tested and that they have a positive test. That we need to know that immediately. We will be doing contact tracing. So we ask that that individual not only inform us, but that they really should start to look at their social circle of anybody they've been in contact with outside of our school community. Our nurse, Rose, has been very, working very closely with Board of Health in the town. They will have a really good open communication. Anytime somebody tests positive, that's, would be reported to the state as anything, like a tuberculosis. So that would automatically get reported to our local Board of Health. And our district now has an agreement with them, or we're working on the agreement to be able to share that information. Again, without breaching confidentiality, we need to know if somebody had a positive case so that we can continue to look at who else we need to notify. The mild illnesses, we ask people to obviously self-isolate for at least 10 days. You're going to hear 14 days and you're going to hear 10 days. So for a full-blown positive COVID with multi-symptoms, you know, it's a 14-day quarantine. We ask in many, many scenarios that we're getting CDC guidance, Board of Health guidance, that minimally 10 days with no symptoms for at least three. So that kind of equals the 13, close to the 14 days. Our district, and I'm sure you'll hear from Paula in a minute, our district is adopting a negative test to return, so you'll hear more about that. To me, it's not so much I worry about 14 days, 13 days, 10 days. We know you have to have a negative test in order to come back and come back to work. If an individual is not tested and they choose not to go through COVID testing, it's immediate 14-day quarantine at home. Okay, questions? Hi, Chris, thank you.
I had a, I'm sorry, I had a question real quick. It's probably not for you necessarily, but have we suspended the policy where the, the parents get a, a letter home when the kid's been absent for 10 times or something like that? Have we suspended that policy?
No, at this point, we're, we still have an attendance policy because DESI is recommending that whether a student is at home or in school, we count them present. So I know that we've come up with our own codes, present in school, present remote. And I would just add that, let's just say, a student has symptoms, but they're not outwardly sick. I would recommend that they jump on their computer at home and be present remotely for the day. So they're still getting their day of education in. But the attendance policies right now have not been lessened in any way.
And I know that information's going to be shared with the parents through the open house because they're, not that we've changed the policy, but they will be discussing the attendance and what the expectations are for attendance.
I was just, I always just felt that that kind of made people feel like they
Have to send their kids to school.
Kids at school with, with, you know, minor symptoms. And then, and then by 12 o'clock, they're, you know.
Sick, yeah, yeah. And doctors' notes are always a good mechanism. I know our nurses work very well with parents, that if kids are really on that border and they want to choose, I was that parent, that if, you know, a good day of rest and we don't really need to go to the doctor, you get to learn. If you get to 10, there's an issue. You know, it's, it's a chronic problem at that point. So we hope to not to get to that point. See, now I have color, like halfway through my slides, so. So if an individual is exposed to COVID and it's definitely that they've been exposed to somebody who's positive, again, we need to look at all the same scenarios. So if the individual is home, when they learn that they were in close contact with somebody, we do ask that they stay at home. The ideal time to be tested, if you have found that you've been in close contact with somebody with COVID, is not immediately when you find out. It really should be four to five days after that exposure because that's when the COVID is at its height and state. And it's the best scenario for a test situation. So we do ask that people are tested. If an individual is at school, when they learn that they were in close contact with somebody, so a parent may call, maybe the child was tested, they hadn't gotten the results yet. The call comes in and the child is already with us. And now we know they've been exposed. A similar scenario, that they would be taken to that isolation room. The parents would be required to pick up the child. And we would follow the same, you know, protocol that they would have to stay home. Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it in here. So if the person gets, if the child or student or, or person gets tested, they're able to come back until they get their results?
No, what I was saying is, if somebody didn't know, say we didn't know, they didn't tell us.
And they didn't get tested?
They may have gotten tested and not told us.
Oh, okay.
And then we find out, and the child's already with us.
But we're trying not to do that.
We're trying not to do that, right. We would like as much as information, as much information as possible.
So if your child gets tested, do not return them back?
Please let us know, yes. And you can't return until, right, you have that. So, you know, the two scenarios, if we find out that outside of school, somebody's been exposed, they let us know, we, we want you to stay home. If we find out, when the child's already with us, we would treat that as a symptomatic case, essentially, and put them in the isolation space, have parents pick up and follow that protocol. Again, similarly, if the test comes back and is negative, as long as you're not symptomatic, you come back to school and remain the same. If somebody tests positive, we ask that they remain home, again, in quarantine. And if they are, if they choose not to be tested, even though they know they've been in close contact with somebody, then we will require them to be a 14-day quarantine, just for safety. So a lot of the actions for us are very similar, no matter the scenario. You know, you're either going to go home and quarantine, you're going to get tested, or you're going to, you know, come back because you're not positive. So I didn't want to put the whole protocol because every scenario is essentially these steps. And it'll say, refer to this section. So there's been a lot of calls. I know Rose, myself, just talking to people, I keep hearing, what happens if we have multiple cases in the district? It's a lot of texts, but I wanted to make sure that it was in your packets in case you get questions and you want to refer people to us. You'll at least have the basic information. It is not an immediate, we have a case, we close our doors. So, you know, I'm sure there's going to come a point where we have a confirmed case in our district. If it's a single case, then we, as a district, will decide, you know, do we need to close a particular classroom? Was there no close contact? So we want to continue to take precautions and not make too many changes. It's going to be a case by case. A single case, I can tell you, is not going to have us do any extreme closure. We would notify, without breaching confidentiality, we would notify that child's classroom that we were alerted that there was a positive, potentially positive case. Again, we want to encourage them to make sure that they're masking, distancing, hand washing. We would make sure that those spaces were extremely clean. And, you know, we would monitor our kids. If there's a suspected in-school transmission, meaning more than one case, and we feel like it originated here and is spreading because of us being in a school setting, then again, as a district, we would be working with the town, with the Board of Health at that point. Would we need to close part of the school? You know, maybe it's the eighth grade. And would we want to close off the eighth grade wing? Everybody goes remote for that period of time. But the rest of the building continues to go with the regular schedule. Or would we look at closing the school for a period of time to just clean the whole building and kind of give everybody a break? We'd have to decide that at that point. If there were multiple cases in multiple schools, again, we would want to include the town, the Board of Health in those discussions. We'd have to look at, again, would we shut down the entire district for a short period of time to clean? Would we want to shut the district for a prolonged period? You know, would we go remote for a longer period of time? Those are decisions we can't make in isolation. We really have to include the town and the Board of Health in that. Before any decision can be made, we would have to also speak to DESI for, for the guidance. There's quite a bit of guidance that they've given us. If a district is considering any kind of closure, regardless of what duration, we do have to alert several people at DESI. And they would work with us on guidance for how that would happen. If we were to close for a number of school days, we would send information, obviously, to families. It would be very explicit as to how long we'd be closing. We'd make sure that all the remote opportunities were available to those students with the separation from school. And again, we want to make sure that our teachers have what they need to be able to continue to teach if we went into a remote setting. In any scenario that we potentially would have a closure, we would want to make sure that our buildings are 100% deep cleaned, sanitized. We want to revisit and make sure that we have enough PPE to make sure that if there was an exposure, are we not gloving enough? Are we not sanitizing enough? We want to do that. And that would also include potentially refresher training for all of our staff. Because if the outbreak is happening on our watch, we're clearly not doing something we should be doing. So I think training would be in order at that point. Questions on any of the closure? I know there's been a lot of questions in the community about this, Sarah.
So I know Chief Gallagher talked about having an onsite COVID testing for the schools. Is that something that's still happening?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if somebody finds out that they have some symptoms, they go to like one of the isolation rooms? Or do they go to the fire department? Like, how does that work?
So one of the things we were going to talk about, but we can certainly bring it up now, is we established a COVID crisis response team, which includes people here from Acushen at Public Schools, as well as the local Board of Health, Chief Gallagher, the town administrator. And we've actually been, it's been really nice, we've been practicing. Nurse Rose and Ms. Bettencourt's on the committee. But we've been practicing different scenarios and talking about, well, what would we do if this happened? What would we do if this happened? So I feel like over the last several weeks, the communication within that group has been really good. Because everybody in the group has a different lens. You know, I'm not a medical doctor, but I'm the superintendent of schools, talking to the fire chief, who has a different lens on this. One of the things that the chief and I had talked about, this goes back several months, is we'd love if you could test all of our teachers when they return. And that's the antibody testing that we brought up earlier. But the, we couldn't do it right away because the EMS and fire department was not completely trained on that nasal swab. Because once you do the antibody test, which gives three results, one is no presence of COVID, one is old antibodies, that you've had it in the past, and one is more active antibodies. Anybody who tests positive, they immediately wanted to give the more invasive test of the nasal swab immediately. So that's why we, we held off until they were trained and we could get that done before our students return, just to see where we were at with the staff. If we suspect a student has COVID or has a lot of the symptoms, they are ready to help us and do testing where they would come on site. I know that I've asked Ms. Bettencourt and Nurse Rose to work with Chief Gallagher. And I know he was supposed to come here and do some dry runs on where they're going to set up.
Doing it next week.
Next week, yeah. So they are prepared that when our students come in, we're trying to make things as easy as possible for families. This is all optional for the adults as well as students. It's their choice. But as Ms. Bettencourt just outlined, if they refuse the test, then they definitely have to quarantine for all that time. We're working with a lab that gets us these results much quicker than if we were relying, let's say we had some type of an outbreak where we had several students and adults who needed to be tested. Again, it's one centralized location of testing versus us relying on, you go to your pediatrician, you call your doctor, and then trying to get all that information. We're trying to make it easier for our families and our staff. So I have to say that the chief has been quite instrumental. The town has been quite supportive. We're using CARES funds, funds to We're using CARES funds, funds to work on this. And again, I have Chief Gallagher coming in on Friday to explain to the staff what this antibody test is. It's just the pricking of a finger, right? And then depending on the results, if there's a positive result, they have the option of having a more invasive test. But again, it's all voluntary, but I do, I have received really good feedback from staff that they're really happy that this is being offered so that they know.
A little sense of peace of mind. We're testing people and we're seeing that there's, you know, we're figuring that out first, before we just bring everybody back in an unknown. I think it's a little bit pet of peace of mind when I know the person to the left of me and right of me's been tested. You know that we're all safe.
And I can't say it enough that this is the time where we do have to come together. Our families need to communicate with us. And going back to Mr. Tev's question about the attendance, no one's gonna be penalized if they have to stay home, because they're gonna be able to get on the computer if they're physically able to, because we're trying to keep everyone here safe. So I know what it's like when, you know, your child might have a slight fever and you might give him Tylenol to get to school. This is not the time to do that, because then you would be putting everyone else at risk. The recommendation is to stay home, have that student work remotely from home, and then watch those symptoms. I think communicating with the nurses will be key, and our nurses will do a fabulous job, I know, of guiding our families. Because this is, let's face it, this is a lot of information for people, and it's all new. But depending on the situation, I am confident that Nurse Rose, our nurses, will be guiding our families, here's what you need to do, here's the next step, so that families will be reassured. But I just, I wanna just stress, nobody's going to be penalized in the sense that they have to stay home, because they will have access to their education. Our goal is to keep everyone here at school safe, including our adults and our students.
We're actually in a better situation, 'cause even during cold and flu season, if you choose to keep your kids home, they can still get credit for the day by logging in and participating remotely from school. So I think we'll see a decrease in kinda negative attendance issues.
I'm sorry. So Johnny gets tested, call the parents, yes, he can do the fingerprint thing.
Oh, no, he, so the antibody test is only for staff?
Only for staff.
Before the students even arrive on our campus. The antibody test is only being offered to staff.
Right, but so Johnny has a symptom. What happens? Do we call Chief Gallagher to come and test him, or what do we do?
So being a resident of the town, they are going to have that opportunity for not only the child, but the family to be tested in town.
In town, not at the school, at that location, right then and there?
I don't, I'm not sure if they're gonna come here or if we're gonna go, if the child's gonna go there. I think that's still, we're ironing that out, but that will be available to all students and family members in the town.
Again, I just think it depends on the situation, because I think we can all get a little bit, our mind, somebody sniffles, somebody coughs, and our mind directly is COVID, right? So we have to, this is why we have this response team, so that we can actually discuss with all of the different people and their perspective to say, okay, here's the situation. This is why we were practicing different scenarios, because again, this is so new to all of us.
And I think our nurse will take the lead on, you know, if we feel a child should be tested. If they're showing enough symptom, symptomology, then we would be the ones recommending that they're tested.
And then how long would the results be once they were tested?
I thought, was it a matter of forty-eight hours? So do you have it in the email?
Yep, so the lab that they're working with is twenty-four to thirty-six hours, I believe, which is much quicker if you went to your own doctor. They have a setup with the labs, I'm just trying to see if I have it in here. But if I recall correctly, it's anywhere between twenty-four and it's very quick turnaround. So they would have to quarantine until we had those results, you know, but we would guide them and let them know and communicate the situation.
I just think it's a great thing that the town's saying, you know, the hassle of going to your pediatrician, making an appointment, hoping they have enough tests, this is really gonna alleviate that stress for families, so.
Plus, you don't have to pay the copay.
That's the other positive.
'Cause this is all free for a cushion.
Yeah, this is all CARES funding. And I will say, a cushionet has really been ahead of the curve on this. D E S I, within the last week or two, just put out a mobile response team that will respond for testing. So that's another tool that we'll have in our back pocket should we need it. But I'm really comfortable with the protocols that we have in place right now, working with the town to give people what they need, so people are comfortable moving forward.
Jen, do you have a question?
Yeah. I just have one more final question. We kept mentioning Rose Monte as our nurse. Do we have two nurses or one nurse?
We do, we will probably know that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so there probably will be.
There will be two nurses.
Okay, thank you. That was Ellie, sorry, thanks, Jen.
I actually did have a question about contact tracing. How, how wide will we, we go with our efforts here in the school with contact tracing? Like, our capacity to do that, say, beyond the borders of our schools, or just curious?
And I think it's gonna be a communal effort, because I, this, it's impossible for us to do extensive contact tracing beyond what we know.
Right.
Our role as the school district is first, I think we need to define what close contact, what does that exposure mean? That's another question we get all the time. So to have had an exposure, you've had to be unmasked within three feet for fifteen minutes. If you've not been in that scenario, then that's not really considered an exposure. So if you're six feet apart and masked, and you find out a person that was six feet away from you with a mask is positive, that's not considered an exposure, 'cause you've not been in that close contact. So again, we would wanna tread lightly with families, because if we knew there was a positive case, that, that classroom would still be alerted that there was a positive case. Would we, at that point, have to dismiss everybody to get tested? No, because if we were sure that there was not a kinda breach, then we wouldn't have to worry about that. Our level of contact tracing would be, you know, student A in this classroom, tested positive, we would alert that classroom that there was an expo, you know, that there was a positive case. We would then, and we've been working with our staff, to keep really good documentation. So if a student leaves that classroom to go to speech therapy or another service, that now is a second cohort of kids that we'd have to be alerted to. If they're, you know, in a basketball league, and we know that, we would want that parent to then alert that cohort of kids. I don't know that we would do that messaging, but we would work with the family to figure out how, why they have to kinda throw that net. We would do that for our school community.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
If anything comes up, you know, you can certainly either get in touch with Paula, and she can ask questions, you can get in touch with me. This'll be an ongoing conversation. Like I said, the, the actual protocol is many, many, many pages. But I figured it was a good overview for families, simple, and just kinda the big bullet points, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Bailey, policy updates?
Yes, so.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Do you think we could take something out of order, the A Y S A, since we do have two people here and it's gonna be a long one?
That's a great suggestion. I'm, yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Is that okay, Dr. Bailey?
Yes, it's fine.
Do we have to take a vote to do that?
To go out of order?
Yep. Yep, okay, yeah, so I would like to request a motion, please, to. Oh, okay, yes, I'm. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with that, so we can. So we're gonna move forward in the agenda, just, you guys have been waiting patiently. And so we're gonna move to points, let's see, sorry, six C on our agenda, which is under school member, school committee member reports soccer field rental appeal. And so I'll give you the floor.
All right, thank you, thank you, Dr. Bailey, for giving me the opportunity. My name is Paul Masaraco, the president of the Christian Youth Soccer. I'm here to reconsider the use of the fields that got denied to us. So I just wanna go over a couple of things that we have, that we wanna bring up to the school committee of the approach that we have going on for the fields. And so I know we are following all the guidelines of Massachusetts through the government and also through Mathieu Soccer. And Mathieu Soccer also advised that every league has to have a COVID-19 officer. And we do have an officer for the Christian Youth Soccer that's overseeing all the guidelines and all the regulations, that every time it gets updated, our officer is updating all the guidelines through all the coaches and the players and the parents. So with this, I'll have Paul, he volunteered to be the COVID-19 officer. So Paul does have a binder of all the guidelines and everything. We won't go through everything, but he does have a lot of information that he can share to the, to the school committee, and hopefully that we get the approval that we can use these fields for these kids. Paul?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I'm not gonna bore anybody with a lot of this stuff, 'cause we just went through it. The only difference with us is we're a li, a little bit more strict as far as the contact tracing and the quarantining the players. So how we're gonna do it, or how we have to do it, is, say Johnny has contacted the symptoms, that whole team would then be quarantined for fourteen days. So we're not gonna risk the, is it impossible, is it not? That, that parent would then have to contact me as the officer, explain to me, then I have to go to the Board of Health. That's something we already set up together, myself, the Board of Health, and if we have to do it with the school, that's fine, too. Trying to go in order here. Our contact tracing, it's gonna be every child that arrives, I have to assign a contact coordinator for every team. So every team has a coach, assistant coach, contact coordinator. The job of that coordinator is to sit down, or stand up, actually, six feet apart, mask on, everybody has to wear a mask, there is no, in soccer, there's no, I am not wearing a mask to the field. Now it's playing, arriving, leaving, on the bench. Anytime you're closer than six feet apart, that's the new guidelines. So our coordinator would approach little Johnny, ask him these questions, which every coach has a piece of paper, I mean, I could pass it around after, has their name, and asks a couple of questions. Again, we have to watch out for HIPAA law, so there's only certain things they can ask. This was provided to us by MISA. It would be the obvious hundred, hundred point four, if you've been in contact with anybody last couple of days. What else is there? We have to check off if they're wearing a mask to and from, and we need to know every person that was in the vehicle that brought them. That's where we're a little stricter.
And the kids are wearing masks while they're playing?
Yes, that's the new guidelines. So if I'm playing and you have the ball and you're this far away, I can pull mine down. As soon as we approach, from me to Mrs. Flynn, I have to pull mine up. All the kids have to have it on. And it has to be the regular loop, can't be the gator. That's MISA, that's how their, their club soccer's already started, and that's what they're doing. I mean, I don't know if there's any questions, I'm, I know that it was denied, and I understand it. I completely get it. I mean, we're just trying to get these kids out there.
I have, I have a question, I'm just, it's unclear to me what, 'cause I read the, the letter. Dr. Bailey, I read the letter, I, I wasn't quite sure exactly what the, the reason was. I couldn't tell from it. Do you mind just talking on that?
Sure. This was not a decision that was taken lightly. I can tell you that my own daughter played club soccer. So, you know, without emotions getting into this, I do feel for these kids. My own son, his sports has stopped since March. This has been a very difficult situation. So when it came time to discuss allowing our field use, it wasn't just the field use, but it was our gymnasium, we have rentals for gymnasium, et cetera. We tried to look at everything, and we did. We looked at all of the guidelines. I also met with all of the area superintendents regarding the rentals. And I was told by our regional group of superintendents, except for one district, that no one was allowing rentals at this time due to safety reasons. And when I spoke to the business manager in New Bedford, because they, as far as I know, they are allowing rentals, he said they've had a lot of problems. I told him what the situation was, and he said he doesn't know how long it's going to last, because they've had a lot of problems with the social distancing. Kids were not following the guidelines. And he said there's been a lot of complaints, a lot of people driving by different fields, taking pictures. I went back to the superintendents again and again. Everybody said, we're going to all of these lengths to make our schools and our classrooms safe. Why would we allow others to come onto our property, our gymnasium, our fields, when many of our own children participate? And now, again, going back to the contact tracing, they're now in our classrooms. I know that the soccer association has students from other towns. So again, you're just building on more and more children that they're exposed to. And again, also, high school sports, a lot of them have gone to floating seasons. A lot of them are doing smaller pods, and this is high school sports, because of the same issue in terms of how do we keep the kids safe?
So is, so what I'm hearing is, this isn't necessarily a liability issue. I mean, the league must have their own liability, correct? And so it's more of a, a position of principle?
I would say safety is the number one issue. Also, I can tell you that our attorney, we've been trying to get an agreement with the soccer folks, and turn, and I think the biggest issue has been the maintenance of the fields. We still do not have an agreement. That was just one more reason. But I will say, the primary reason for saying no was the COVID, the pandemic situation and for safety. And I was not the only superintendent in the region to deny rentals. It was all over the place. So, you know, people are not, these are superintendents who have been coaches, you know, we all have children who play sports. This is not something, but we're sitting in a different chair, and whether they have the liability or not, I wanna be able to put my head on the pillow at night and know that I did everything I could to keep our students and staff safe in our buildings. And this is just another way that we're exposing more children and adults to the possibility of the virus.
Just so I'm clear, we've been trying to reach a legal agreement to allow this, or?
We've been trying for over a year.
No, for the, for the contract.
For the, for the agreement.
Yeah, we're working on that, we're almost ready to, to, to fill that in. We're, we're just talking about the COVID issue right now.
Right, that, that whole.
It is important to point out that we don't have a rental agreement in place yet.
Right, but it does default to the overall rental agreements that we have with other districts, at other, other companies.
Right, because the rental agreement, I mean, that's something totally separate from, from what I understand. Because I know we are all trying to work on this thing, and COVID did not help anybody.
Correct.
And just to add on, Dr. Bailey, if I may, we too are gonna try to do our best to protect every single student, because at the end, it is my responsibility, it is Paul's responsibility. With that, that's why we have to follow these stricter guidelines. Every parent has to have a meeting with me regarding this. Every coach has had a meeting with me regardless. Every coach has given their own P P E stuff. We purchased all that stuff, A Y S A did, not the kids, but the league itself. We purchased everybody sanitizer, where we wanna put the bigger gallon sanitizer, if we're allowed this, out on the field, so everybody has that opportunity. There is no spectators. There are no games here. This is just merely for practice. We're gonna, we're gonna stop the games on the facility itself. After speaking with the Board of Health, that's something we decided on together. Our games will not be played here, even though this is our home field, we've decided we're gonna go elsewhere. As far as the safety, I get it, I do understand. But at the same time, we're trying to get these kids out there. They've been stuck in a house. I'm a dad, I have two daughters. One of them lost her whole senior year because of this. Now she's losing her college year. I get it, I completely understand. I have an eleven-year-old, she's coming here this year, which is great. And, and I do understand the whole safety, I'm a police officer. I get it. We've been dealing with this every single day since day one. And I, and I completely understand what Dr. Bailey's saying, but we're also gonna do our best to make sure that every single kid is safe. And in the event something does happen, I don't know if it was at soccer, it could have been in the school, I don't know. But we're gonna do everything like Dr. Bailey said to protect each person, meaning coaches, parents, and the kids. But we're gonna do everything like Dr. Bailey said to protect each person, meaning coaches, parents, and the kids. I mean, that's all I, I, I have nothing else as far as info.
How many teams are gonna be practicing?
Right now, we have a total of seven? Six teams.
And that's how many people?
So some teams vary, we got teams of twenty kids. And then ten kids.
How is that gonna look as far as a practice? Is it gonna be? Two different fields, kids practicing, is it once a night?
Three fields because of this. So the big field that you saw.
Yep.
If we're allowed to use it, it's gonna be three big fields, cuz we don't have games.
Right.
So with that, what everybody probably doesn't know is, I can't put twenty-five kids on one field and that's it. I have to break them up. Seven can be here, seven have to be fourteen feet apart on this side of the field in this corner. Within those seven, they have to be six feet apart. So there's a lot of rules that we have to maintain as far as. You know, being close enough to everybody.
Who and how many people are gonna be monitoring to make sure you guys are following these guidelines?
So with that, I have to turn in paperwork every week to MISA. I have to speak with the board of health regarding this, that's why I got my encyclopedia here. Um myself, the president, we have to be at the field along with one of our uh other directors at every practice. The coaches have to be responsible, that's why they signed waivers, every player signed a waiver. And it explains everything, what they have to and can, can and cannot do. At the end of the week, every single coach has to give me their, their documentation. I then keep it, and if the board of health requests it, I give it to them.
Is there any type of COVID liability wave you guys are signing?
Yes. Which was produced by MISA, by their legal uh department, I guess that's what they're called. And that's for a player and coach.
So meaning if, if a child or anybody gets COVID, we are, that school is not liable?
Well, it would, it'd be us, we'd be the responsible party. If they're under our care, so no. That's why we sign. That's, and it says right on it, AYSA is not responsible, you as a parent have the right to not bring your child. You as a parent have a full understanding that. You are gonna be sometimes in contact. So yes, it, it waives the responsibility off of the school, AYSA, and back to the parent. We've even gone as far as on the legal side, where parents. Some parents are gonna say, my child can't wear a mask because of such and such. I now have to advise that parent that if they are indeed fibbing, that they are held responsible. If their child catches the COVID and then passes it to somebody else and their child was not um wearing a mask.
No, um soccer is a, like a return to play phase three, is it phase three?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I think. Just my thoughts on it is, we're not gonna be able to stop. Youth soccer from happening. Like I know families that have already said, okay, a cushion is not happening, they've already signed their kid up in Taunton. They're going to Dartmouth, they're going to the Cape, like it's not stopping from happening. I'm, I'm a hockey coach. And hockey's another. Phase three and the stuff that we have to do with contract tr- tracing, I mean. It's insane um compared to the re- return to school stuff. Um and we had families that were um going to New Hampshire every weekend to play. Going to Falmouth, oh, it looks so different in Falmouth, Bridgewater and like, and, and we're like, no, 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 just let us open here cuz we're gonna do things right. And so I think, you know. That's kinda my view on it, is we're, by shutting down the fields, we're not gonna stop. The families of a cushionet, we're not gonna stop soccer from happening. It's gonna happen elsewhere. Totally out of our control, mixing with other communities that have perhaps higher test rate. Than, than we have here, which we're excellent here, right? So that's just my view, is I, I find that there's a whole subset of families that are just. Like they've gotta continue with their life here and, and get their kids involved in something, is that?
No, we're seeing it happen now.
Yeah.
And, and unfortunately, because we have to cancel our rec program, which has over six hundred kids. That we couldn't control. I will not lie to you and say, and say, yeah, we'd have full control of that. No, we wouldn't. It was the hardest decision that we've have, I've been involved with this organization for thirteen years. That was the hardest thing we had to do ever, was cancel a whole entire season. Because it's not just me. It's the little kids that wanna play, they don't understand COVID, they don't. And you're right, we're losing a lot of people, we see it, we. My kids play elsewhere also, it's, it's one of them deals where, yes, we're seeing it happen. And we, I'm not gonna control Sarah from taking her kids somewhere else. So it doesn't change anything, I mean, we've gone, like I said, we've gone as far as stopping the game, so we wouldn't have anybody come to us. But I can't tell you as parents here, you can't take your kids somewhere else and then come to the school, like I, I won't do that. So with this, I mean, we're just trying to give these kids the opportunity. And again, I, I wanna stress, I do understand completely what Dr. Bailey's saying. I really do. I completely get it. But we're just trying to, that's why we minimize everything as far as how many, how many players, how many parents are gonna be allowed, we can only have one chaperone there. We're trying to minimize it so we can allow these kids who, this is all they have, some of them, I mean. Th- that's it. To get out in the field, we're gonna do everything possible to make sure everybody's safe, including the school staff, I mean, that's, that's our priority also. And. That's everybody's priority, is to make sure everybody's safe. So it's not something we're just saying, oh, we're just gonna throw a bunch of kids out there, let them run. No. But at the same time, I could come here with four kids and two of them have COVID. And I'm not belonging to the soccer, I'm just playing on the field. It, it, it's, it's just one of them situations where we're gonna do our very best to control it. As you can see, I've had some homework, I feel like I'm back in college. And I mean, we're, we're just really hoping that everybody reconsider's and allows us to at least practice or get these kids out there.
And I just wanna piggyback off of that, Paul. Um we are gonna be really strict with this, if we see any parents or any kids. Not follow the rules, we will kick them out. I, I'm not, I'm, I ain't taking, I mean, tolerance is gonna be very low, I mean, I'm gonna go out there. And if kids don't follow the rules or coaches, I'm kicking the whole team right out and they will not practice anymore. Bottom line, I, I mean, I've told Paul and I've told the director that if I drive by. And I see one team that's not following the rules, I will stop and they kick and they, and they, they will not practice anymore, they're done. Bottom line, if you can't follow the rules, then you shouldn't be practicing. And, and parents are gonna be staying inside their cars in the parking lots. And we're given a half, half hour gap for the next team to come in. So they gotta wait till everyone clears out and then the next team comes in. There's no mingling in the parking lot, talking to each other, they gotta go in their car and leave. So.
Thank you, Paul.
How many days a week will it be?
Uh we'll, we're still trying to figure out, uh, I mean, again, once, if it does get approved, then we'll go back to board, I mean. And uh once I have a schedule, I can send it to the school and so like that, and they can see what days we're gonna practice.
Is it like three days or is it five days roughly?
Uh it might be three days, it might be four days, I'm not sure, it all depends, cuz we have some teams, honestly, some parents like, I still don't wanna do it.
Yeah.
So that's fine, which is okay. I mean, like, I, I'm gonna speak for my team. I have. You know, a team and I have half of the girls and parents like, well, I don't feel comfortable. That's fine, I, I can't, I can't do nothing, so. So once I have the schedule, I can send it.
There, there are other programs that we had to say no to, unfortunately, because of COVID with rental agreements.
Correct.
Um. I just want us to think about, you know, we've denied other programs and where's the consistent, you know.
My thing is, is they haven't brought it to our attention, they haven't tried to, to fight it, so it's. I think we need to focus on, on one, one team, one issue at a time.
Where, where are the other teams playing locally?
Uh they're everywhere. That's the thing, everybody's under this. Blindness that there's no soccer going on. Soccer's going on at Four Kicks, whether it's indoor, outdoor. Soccer is going on in Mariner right now as we speak, for the, the older girls. So there are teams practicing, soccer's playing at Roosevelt Junior High, at Riverside Park, at Buttonwood Park. So they are playing, it's just the bigger organizations as far as the rec programs is what shut down. You know what I mean? That's gone. There is nobody playing any recreational soccer because you can't control that. But as far as the smaller travel style teams or a clubbed style team, they're still playing.
A lot of the rentals that have been getting denied that I've known is to use the facilities indoors. And that I totally get, I mean, a lot of indoor facilities are not renting their places. Now, when it's outdoor, I, I am, I mean, I know for a matter of fact that New Bedford High had a conditioning. Going on at the facilities there outdoor for ten weeks. Uh N- New Bedford Volk had a uh eight week of conditioning, over a hundred kids, and there was no issues there. So, I mean, when you have an outdoor event and everyone is using the proper PPE, there wasn't one case at all, so I don't see a problem being outdoors.
And, and the thing is, we're not gonna have everybody practicing today. We can't do that. So it's gonna be, right now, the way it's projected and it's not official. It's one team, two teams the most on a field, separated by another field. So all three fields will not be practicing. It'll be the, one of the big ones, space, big one. For an hour and a half. Next day might be the next two. You know what I mean? So it's not, all the kids are not gonna be playing at the same time, that, that we, we can't allow, we will not allow that. And I, Paul and I speak a lot on this cool COVID thing. That's not gonna happen. We can't, we can't personally allow that because we don't have the, the personnel to maintain and to watch that. So we have to break it up. Some teams are only practicing once, so they may only practice Monday and then the following Monday.
So I wanna allow um all of our members a chance to comment.
What would be a couple of examples of other folks we've, we've denied?
Yeah, so I know we have a, the, a YWCA program, but i- if you guys could speak to that, that you'll have more detail.
Sure, the ones that we have notified already are the ones who typically use our facilities. And that would be the YMCA after school program, so they rent the elementary school after school every day. Um we've notified them that that's not going to be able to take place this year. We've notified AYAA basketball, um that we will not be able to have them this year. And again, when we notified them, I notified those, those groups, I said, please come back to me in November. And then we can see if things have changed. But from now until December thirty first, we're saying not, no rentals. So it would be the AYA.
Indoor in both of those.
Boy Scouts, um PT, I don't, PTO. Um cheerleaders who practice here, um so it was, it was those groups.
And when I met with the superintendent group, I did specify and said, you know, you're not allowing rentals, is it just the indoors? And there were superintendents from Volk, New Bedford, although I already explained that New Bedford is allowing, but they're having issues. Superintendents from down the Cape. We've all had extensive training on the situation. And nobody felt comfortable allowing this to happen. So.
And how does our board of health here in a cushionet feel about this decision? Um I know that you never make decisions in isolation, isolation, Dr. Bailey, so whom else, who else have you consulted in our town?
Board of health on this one, um I spoke to the business manager. And the other superintendents in the region, which consists of probably, I mean, all the way down the Cape, all, all of this area. Um and when I brought it up, they looked at me like they couldn't believe I was asking the question about rentals. Because I know it's important to our children and our families. I mean, this was not a decision that was taken lightly at all.
Have we, have you had any specific conversations with legal counsel about this?
Legal counsel for the last year has advised us not to rent until we have a signed agreement. That has been the ongoing advice of legal. And legal was in agreement with the decision based on the COVID situation.
Are you working with board of health on this?
Yes. So I spoke to the board of health last week. As long as we follow every single thing that's in this binder and all the guidelines that Governor Baker and MISA suggests. He is okay with that. But like he said, once an outbreak happens, like anything else, things can change next week, which I understand. They allowed baseball. He did have his problems there. They had to do their own different action plan. Their issue was different than ours because it was mask wise. We have to wear a mask. There is no question about wearing a mask. Every player must wear a mask, every parent must wear a mask. When I explained that to him, he understood. He said, as long as everybody's following these guidelines, and of course, the school's okay with playing on the field, that he would support it. I have to give him weekly tracing paperwork and everything else.
I just wanna make sure everyone has a chance to comment, um any other thoughts that wanna be stated, shared, questions?
I, I just wanna say that um I completely respect Dr. Bailey's viewpoint and I, I absolutely know where she is coming from. As the main administrator of this, of this district. Um but I also believe that parents need to make their own decisions on, on what they need to do with their children. And if parents are comfortable letting their children play with these guidelines, then who is the government to say that they can't if all the rules are being followed? And that's my personal stance.
That's one thing that we've expressed to our coaches. You cannot force anybody to play. And, and like I said, I don't want this to be a, a bickering matter between us, absolute, please do not take it that way, that's not what I want. We're just trying to do what's best for the kids as far as an organization.
And they're, and if they're not playing on our cushionet field, they're going to find another place. So in, in my personal mind. We're not making them any safer by not having them here.
No, I mean.
Again, my personal view.
I signed my daughter up to play somewhere else already cuz I need her to do something. And she's been playing at Four Kicks Outdoor for the last uh two months. And we just went to a tournament in New Hampshire, you know, and the guidelines for soccer, it's crazy. There's no corner kicks, everything changed for soccer, it's not even soccer, you know, it's more of just being out there and passing the ball to the kids, that's all it is. It's again, the physical activity back again, that's all it is. And I mean, again, here's the attendance sheets, the board of health will get one of these every week.
Okay, we'll take it to a vote. Um so, let's see. So I would like to, um how does this have to be stated, Kelly, am I just? Okay, I'd like to request a motion, please, um to reverse the um. Use, uh, the rental agreement denial um for use of the soccer fields.
No, I think we need to add that it reverts back to the previous contract, not the current one that we have, correct, Kristen?
Well, we don't have a rental agreement.
Ever had a contract.
Not that contract, but to the rental agreement that we have policy.
There is the school committee use of facilities policy, which is what we followed before. Um before we started thinking about. Doing a separate um individual agreement with soccer.
I think that needs to be part of the motion as well.
Okay, I need that repeated.
So I think what Sarah was sa- saying is that we need to make it clear that if rental is allowed. That it will still, it will remain under the school committee use of facilities agreement, policy. And that policy basically says what the fees are to just, to use the fields. That's all it is, it's the fees to use the fields, not to maintain the fields, not to. Um have any special interest in the field, but it's the privilege of using the field.
So a motion to reverse the decision by Dr. Bailey.
Okay, I would like to request a motion, please, to reverse the decision made by Dr. Bailey. Um denying rental of our soccer fields. With the understanding that if this is reversed, we would go to the current school committee policy rental agreement. Is that correct?
I think so, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I just wanna say that um I'm gonna be in agreement with you, Dr. Bailey, on this. Um I, I understand everyone, so my kids play soccer too and I'm super disappointed that they're not playing. Um but I feel like I gotta take legal counsel on this one without having a rental agreement in place. And, um and I just think we're doing so much to keep our kids safe that I just. Um I think we should be consistent here with all of our, with our rentals right now. And that doesn't mean soccer can't happen. Um you know, maybe we could revisit this in the spring. Um but, and, so I just wanted to share my thoughts on that before we go to vote. So any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Mr. Cabs?
Yes.
No.
May may I just ask a question on this, though? As far as going forward, do you want me to still submit any tracing to you guys? Because the whole HIPAA thing, how do you want me to do that if we go forward with this?
If if I could just make a suggestion, I would say only in the cases where it's positive.
You want me to still advise you?
I think the communication would be important as we move forward if there is an outbreak or a situation to contact either my office, Mrs. Benavides, or Mrs. Flynn.
Right, I just wanna keep it on the, you know what I mean? Because again, this is for the kid's safety, so I wanna make sure that.
Everyone's on the same page.
Right, I'm sending to the Board of Health, I wanna send some to the school department also, saying, hey, listen, we had a possible positive contact. I'm not gonna give you the person's name, of course, but.
But if we know that our students who are attending school here, we're in contact.
That's what we're trying to do. I'm gonna make it simplify and streamline it.
I mean, if the kid does attend the school, we will say that the child does attend the school, either elementary or middle school. That way, we will notify it everything, yeah. Yeah, and then we'll have the parent notify the school.
Right, so I just wanna make sure we're on the same, yeah, on the same page. That's all.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
One thing that we'll need just going forward, guys, is the, um, you know, we've asked this before, how many students you have? Kids you have, the total number of kids, how many of those are from Akushnet, and how many are from other towns? I believe you provided that. Um, just make sure that's updated, because I know you want this many from Akushnet and this many, as you said, other communities. And then also the insurance paperwork.
Yep, we already got it.
And then also, um, whatever your schedule is gonna be, because it's, the fees are based on a, um, per, it's whatever category you are, which is based on how many Akushnet kids you have. And also, it's on, um, per hour or a a round figure for if it, for a certain number of hours. So we need to know.
Absolutely, we're just waiting on this to see what happened before we do set anything. And I can tell them, parents, we'll practice it tomorrow.
Well, good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go back in the agenda. We were about to discuss policy when we took a break.
And in the interest of time, um, I can say that this is the first reading for, uh, the policies that are listed, harassment, face coverings. Um, there's a separate, you know, listing that I put in based on what we wrote in our student handbooks attached to the MAS C policy. There's a policy on COVID-related issues. There's a remote learning new policy. So these are all new policies from MAS C, uh, mostly around remote learning. There's a remote learning addendum. And then the last one is immunization of students. And the more recent, uh, policy on that is until Governor Baker lifts this order, all children during this pandemic, uh, must receive the flu vaccination prior to December thirty first. So our nurse is working on some communication for families with that. Um, I guess I would need to know from the policy subcommittee, me, uh, we have not met. This is just the first reading, uh, as these were mostly thing COVID-related mostly. If the policy subcommittee would like to meet, I'm more than happy to schedule a meeting. And then this will be back on the agenda next month. Uh, we won't vote until we have the second reading and a meeting.
Okay. Yes. So for for these policies, um, Ron, I believe you and I are on the subcommittee. Um, we're probably gonna need Andy's help, our attorney, um, especially on the immunization of students. I have a lot of questions about that. So just a heads up on that, whenever we schedule that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I will do is, Mrs. Gomes, I will s- call legal and check the availability and try to work that around his schedule first, and then I will be in touch with you as to when we can do that subcommittee meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so no vote needs to be taken, 'cause it's first reading, right?
Correct.
All right. Great. So we're gonna move on to the business manager's report. Mrs. Flynn?
Okay, thank you. Um, near packet, you have a few reports for me. Uh, these are for our new members. We'll be going through these just about every month, and I'll be giving you some updates, especially on the budget, um, as we go along in some of our more volatile budget lines like tuition, salaries, transportation. Um, seeing that we're just a couple months into the fiscal year, there's not too much to update. But this year, unlike other years, we have incurred a lot of costs that have not been obviously anticipated for or budgeted for. So you do have the, um, sheets that I've been giving to the town administrator and updating on some of the costs that we've incurred. And we've been paying for those out of our local budget. So where you may see some deficits or where there may be some deficits already in September, it's because we've purchased a lot of PPE. We've had some, um, we purchased the temperature stations. We purchased, um, we've had Advanced Air come here and do some, a lot of repairs on our HVAC systems. We've had, uh, different cleaning supplies we've had to purchase. Touchless towel dispensers, more faucets and flushometer. So things like that, that we are hoping that we can get reimbursed through the town funds. Um, just before our meeting, I appeared before the Board of Selectmen to go over some of these costs, and I'm happy to report that they approved. They voted to approve, um, sharing three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the town's CARES funds at this time, uh, with us. Now, these have to be, um, specifically allowed, so the town administrator was instructed to send us the guidelines for that of what is and is not allowed for reimbursement. So we'll have to take a look, um, once we get those and compare it closely to what we've already purchased, and then have it for consideration going forward to for future purpose, uh, purchases. I will say all these things on this first page that you see are all things that we had to purchase over the summer in order to open school safely. Um, so unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of, um, you know, uh, decision as to whether we can or can't do it. Um, we needed to rent those nice containers, you see, to store a lot of excess furniture. We needed to have movers come and move the furniture out because our facility staff was very busy, um, doing their regular summer work. Uh, so some of these things, we're hopeful that they're going to be reimbursed, um, but we've already expended the money out of our budget. So I just want the committee to be aware of of that. So this year, more than others, we're going to keep, have to keep a very, very close watch on the budget. We usually, we always do, um, but this year, knowing that we've already expended a significant amount of money, um, is going to be, you know, a challenge going forward. So some things that I talked about at the Board of Selectmen's meeting that, you know, I wanted to let them know, and and Dr. Bailey and I met with the town administrator this morning as well, um, some concerns going forward that I want everybody to be aware of. Like I said to the Board of Selectmen tonight, um, I certainly don't mean to sound the alarm, um, but I want everybody to know now in September what's, what the situation is we could be facing. Um, so going through some of these expenditures or the anticipated ones, um, you know, we talked about hiring building-based subs. Okay, so in February, when we set our budget, that wasn't on the horizon, right? We didn't think that we would need that. So those building-based subs have to be paid for out of somewhere. Um, we have applied for the, um, CARES grant, the, uh, the CVRF reopening grant through DESI. Uh, the school department in Akushnet is going to receive two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So, but all those expenditures have to be made by December thirty first. So remember that. That's gonna be some of the tricky part here. Is so we have put in, uh, building-based sub costs through December thirty first. But what happens after January first? How do we, how do we continue to fund those salaries? Um, my thought at first was that we could flip that over to the town funds. But, um, in speaking with the town administrator today, their funds expire, have to be expended by December thirty first. So some of these things, we've got it covered through December thirty first, but after that is where the question remains. Um, right now, as Dr. Bailey said, we sought to hire four building-based subs. We've only been able to hire one so far. Um, but again, if that one person stays all year, we can really only charge that person's salary to the grant through December thirtieth. So even though we haven't maybe hired all four, we still, that doesn't help us. Um, same thing with additional custodians. We need to hire some additional custodians to support our custodians during the day. We need to do a lot more, um, cleaning and disinfecting throughout the day. The kids and the staff come in. Somebody needs to go around to all the touch points, the doors, the sinks, the faucets, anywhere that someone may have touched the hand railings, and do some quick disinfecting. Um, we're going to have to get in and out of our bathrooms a lot more frequently throughout the day. So we know to accomplish that, we only have one full-time custodian on during the day. And we also know our guys at night, which we have two in each building, are gonna need some support too. So the thought was to hire two more custodians that could maybe not mimic each shift, but bridge across the shift. So instead of doing seven to three, two to ten, maybe we do a ten to six or a nine to five, so that that person is here for the bulk of the day when our students and staff are, but also could be assisting with the, um, the deeper cleaning at night. So again, um, we put that through our reopening grant, but again, same problem, December thirtieth, that it's good till. So come January first, um, you know, we have to be aware of that. So those are the pitfalls of this. Um, other things that have arisen, bus cleaning and disinfecting. Um, you know, we run three tiers, high school, middle, elementary. So as soon as those high school kiddos get off the bus, we need someone to clean and disinfect the bus before we pick up for middle school. Same thing for elementary school, and then we repeat it for the afternoon. Um, each bus, probably to properly disinfect, would be about five minutes. Uh, per bus, there's eleven buses, that's fifty-five minutes. We don't have that much time in between, so when the bus comes back from high school, there's only a certain amount of time before it has to go back out to pick up Ford. Even less time when it comes back to Ford and goes back out for the elementary school. Um, so we don't have the staff here to do it, even if we were to hire more custodians. Um, we had thought about repurposing some staff, but the way, uh, some some cafeteria staff, but right now, that's not going to be possible. Well, with the advent of universal free lunch, our caf staff will be utilized in full for their primary job. So we have looked at other ways to accomplish this. Um, the 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 bus company has offered, um, at a cost, to have their drivers disinfect and clean the buses at sixty dollars per bus, uh, per day. And that's to do it between six and eight times. Six times would be between each run, and then the extra ones are with, you know, the, if there's a transfer at the high school level, where we have kids exiting and more kids getting on to go to their final destination. Um, so to do that, it would be estimated to cost for the entire year a hundred and twelve thousand to do all eleven buses, six to eight times per day. Um, you know, that's a lot of money. Uh, it's something that I think we need to do. Um, we don't have another way of doing it. And again, same thing, that's an eligible cost for our reopening grant, um, and also for the town, but only through December thirty first. So now we're back at that. You know, we we like to say as many times as we solve a problem, we've now created, you know, ten more.
What about an outdoor company, like an outside company to clean the buses? Could we do something like that?
So, um, I've been working with the other business managers that use Amaral Bus, and one of the business managers went and got a quote for Surf Pro to do it one time.
I'm talking about like a.
One time a day.
Yeah, no, not a Surf Pro. I mean, like, we have, there's a lot of people in Akushnet that are, they're they're asking for cleaning jobs. Sort of like, almost like a bus monitor thing, kind of, but would, if we got a group of people to be willing to do that as a job, is that something that we can look into? Not a Surf Pro or any, any large company?
Again, we would need, uh, ten or eleven people on a regular, um, committed basis to go in and turn those buses over very quickly. And that would be, they'd be employees of the school department or of the town. Um, they would work for, probably from what I would say roughly seven AM in the morning till nine thirty. And then again, in the afternoon, which, as I'm gonna tell you in a couple minutes, Fairhaven has changed their schedule, so it would be from, say, uh, one thirty to four thirty. So it would be trying to fit that in at, say, minimum wage, which is, what, twelve seventy-five an hour? So that, at that point, you know, we're creeping up to that sixty dollars a day.
Have we pushed back, have we pushed back on them on this?
We have, we have, uh, Dr. Bailey and I met with them last week, um, and then we followed up with them also to try to, um, you know, make some suggestions. We have, uh, offered to provide, we are outfitting the buses. Right now, eight of the twelve buses are, it's eleven plus a spare, have the hand sanitizer dispensers. They have allowed that. That was a negotiating piece. Um, we're providing those, and we're providing the sanitizer. We're providing the, um, cleaning, um, chemicals that we use here in our buildings. So I don't know if you want to add.
What are they providing?
That rate is just their.
They're providing the driver to do the.
That's not any more like hourly labor.
No, it's not.
Right.
It's not, but it's more than what they have agreed to provide in our contract, right?
We also, as you know, we had a situation. They lost in the percentages.
If we have half the kids going to school, does that mean roughly less stops?
Um, they are basing the stops based on the students that are taking the bus. So we surveyed the kids, on the families, and they've developed the routes or in the process of developing the routes based on those responses.
So if there's less kids, we could probably do the cleaning, no?
The trouble is, is that it's when the bus comes back from high school and when it has to go out for the middle school. So there's probably a bigger window of time, but I know from looking at the routes that they provided us for elementary and middle, um, the buses arrive here for middle school at, what, roughly, say, we'll say eight AM, that by the time the kids get off. The furthest, um, the earliest stop is at eight twenty-five to pick up elementary down near the town hall. So it's twenty-five minutes to, you know, get the kids off, clean the bus, and then get back down to that first stop.
I have a question. How many, how many kids roughly fit in a bus altogether on a?
Right, so under normal circumstances, we have seventy-seven passenger buses.
How many seats, though?
So there's seats for seventy-seven, but there's, you know, so there's probably.
Is that three to a seat?
Yeah, that's three to a seat. So real typically, we would see fifty kids max on a bus if we're gonna seat two to a seat, you know, round figures. Now with the Department of Ed's reopening guidelines, it's one seat per, um, one, one child per seat. So the max, they say in their guidelines, they have schematics of all the different type buses. Our type is a seventy-seven seat, max is twenty-five kids. So fortunately, based on the cohorts and based on the surveys of the kids who are and aren't taking the bus right now, we are able to fit the kids that want to take the bus, need to take the bus, on the bus only in one round, in one run. So that's the good news. We don't have to entertain multiple routes, multiple runs, and at a greater cost.
So will mo- most routes have full twenty-five children?
Um, right now, no. Uh, I believe the last.
Curious what the percentage of our ridership is.
We, we don't, we just got all the listing, I think, on Friday. I honestly haven't had a chance to take a look fully at it. But I know in our meeting with Amaral Bus, they are not, they're seat seating a child every other seat. So we do have capacity on the buses if and when parents change their mind, people move in. Um, we do have some capacity to put more kids on the bus right now. They didn't wanna go into it with a full load so that if someone all of a sudden circumstances change, we need to be able to provide that kid a seat on the bus.
So just thinking outside the box here, let's say we do like what a restaurant does right now, where they have all the tables out there and they put a red sign where somebody just left and it hasn't been cleaned yet. What if our, would we be able to make like little signs, red or green, and when a child leaves, they turn it to red 'cause they've already sat there, and we don't have to clean the bus, right? And then when the kids come back on, they can only sit in the green spaces that are, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't know.
I know this is out outside the box, but for a hundred and twelve thousand.
Yeah, I do understand. Um, the kids will have assigned seats, and I don't know that, um, you know, it's, it's, the problem is, is that we've got high school kids, and then we have a different group of kids coming on, and a different group of kids coming on. So we may, you know, some seats may not be taken, some seats may be taken. Um, the idea, though, is to assign seats, which, in speaking with the bus company, we will make those assignments, or they will make those assignments, probably after the first week of school, once we see exactly who is and who isn't on the bus. Because you could have signed up for the bus and then decided not to take it. So we'll, we'll have assigned seats. So we'll, we'll have assigned seats for those kids, so I'm not sure.
That's my, that's my concern, is that we have all these people going on the bus at first, and then all of a sudden, we're spending a hundred and twelve thousand on five kids on a bus, when we can easily not bother cleaning it, because they can sit elsewhere.
Right. I know, um, unfortunately, um, we did try to negotiate with Amaral Bus about this.
You don't have to negotiate if we don't need the cleaning, is what I'm saying. Can we figure this out without needing the cleaning?
If we want to not clean the buses, then we don't.
Until the end of the shift, where the, don't they clean anyways, or no?
They would do, no, not disinfect. So they would do sweeping, they would pick up like trash on the seats, but they're not going through and wiping down the seats every, every day.
Well, most of these companies are using those electrostatic sprayers and just spraying it, they're not wiping it.
Right, so that's what our thought was, is if we could use our folks to get on board, to use the electrostatic sprayers, we do have two right now. I have, I've had two more on order since, um, May, they haven't come in. So those, um, I, I talked to our supplier, we decided to go with a different one that he said he could get in stock rather quickly. So I've ordered four more of those. Um, right now, we have two, one in each building. Um, the really, the, the, the issue is, is capacity of staff to be able to do it. And, and our ability to have them do it.
A hundred and twelve thousand, we can hire somebody.
That's what I'm saying. Like, if we had two, two people or one person that's willing to do it at the end of a bus run, like a, like in the morning and then in the afternoon, an hour, each, two hours a day. I mean, I don't see how a hundred and twelve, I mean, there's gotta be a way here, if we just think about it a little bit. Even if we use another custodian just for that or something.
That, well, that was our original thought, was to hopefully use our additional custodian to go onboard that bus. Um, the problem is, is upon, you know, further thought, again, if you have, um, I haven't seen the bus list for the high school yet, they're still developing those. But if you've got ten buses coming back at, um, I don't know, seven-ten, or seven fifteen from the high school. And those buses have to turn around, they might have a couple of minutes' time to go back out to, um, pick up the Ford kids.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is just two, just do two, having rounds that don't need cleaning, that's the only way you're gonna do it.
Well, it, that's, and that's, the question is, do we not wanna clean between every single run? That's the issue.
If kids are on plain, clean seats, you know, like you do at a restaurant, you don't sit at the red table, you sit at the green one where it's clean.
I mean, I think that's a lot to ask bus drivers to monitor what seat they're gonna be sitting in.
They're gonna be assigned seats anyway, so they have to monitor.
Right, but there may be seats that kids are sitting in on the high school, that kids in Ford aren't sitting in, or kids in, or vice versa, or the elementary. So, um, you know.
A hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Do we have, how are the districts dealing with this? Do we know? Are they paying the bus company?
So, um, I know some other districts are hoping to use the fo- their staff that they have, if they have some extra capacity with their paras, for example. I know one district that they don't have it set in stone yet, but that's what they're hoping to do. Um, you know, other districts are either going to, to pay the bus company to do that. Um, or maybe they're not going to clean and disinfect between runs. I don't, I don't know.
And I just, I wanna say, you know, one offer that we did put out on the table, based on the situation, we're in litigation right now. Um, we still owe them money, we have the money ready to go. Uh, we wanted to give them that money. They want us to sign, uh, an agreement that they can still come after more money, and we said absolutely not. So we're holding on to the money until that's worked out with legal. But I said to them, we don't wanna end up in the situation this current school year, that we were in last school year. March came and we, school was closed, they didn't main, you know, they didn't utilize the fuel, the maintenance. So we all agreed that we shouldn't pay the full amount. So what I said to them was, you know, you're proposing sixty dollars a day per bus, which is a lot of money. I said, you're not starting the school year technically until October fifth, you're not doing the runs every Wednesday. Uh, during the orientation weeks, we've asked families to drive the students here to school, so, you know, there's gotta be some give and take. And, uh, you know, I said, we're really trying to work with you, and I said, I can't sit here and make any promises to you. This would have to be up to the school committee, but I wanna know if you're at least willing to have that conversation with us. And I said, you know, we're gonna counter, how about thirty dollars a day per bus to get that disinfecting done? And I said, you know, maybe I can talk to the committee about, that we'll pay full price this year with thirty dollars a day, up until the end of the year, we'll revisit it. And I said, listen, we may have to pivot and go remote. Then, then that's a lot of days, they didn't wanna discuss any of that. So I put, we put a lot of options on the table to try to work something out, because we know this is a need to disinfect these buses for our students. We have tried endlessly to get our staff, we just don't have the staff like we wanted to at this point. Um, we've put options out there, they do not want to discuss.
So what if we put it to parents and let them know this, that listen, we, we just cannot afford to pay for the cleaning of the buses? If you'd like to have your child on it, on the bus, then so be it. Maybe we'll have them wear gloves and a mask. And if you do, great, and if you don't, then you're gonna have to find private transportation to get them to school. I mean, is this something that we need to do? Is this a?
Go to the store all the time and they're not disinfecting.
Right, that's my point. My point is, are we going above and beyond for a reason that maybe the parents don't mind? Or maybe they never expected it in the first place to be cleaned. I'm just throwing it out there.
And I think the expectation is that they would be wearing masks anyway.
Yes, it is. Masks are required on the bus, so.
So I mean, do we have to clean the buses?
I think it is a guideline, but I can double check that.
Yeah, I'm double, it's, I don't know if it's recommended or if it's required, and that's what we're gonna look at right now.
Have we gotten a comparative price though, from like a company like a Servpro?
So Servpro would do a one-shot, one time per day. Um, one time per day for one specific school district, but this, I am working with the other business managers to do, he's doing a collaborative, um, pricing with Servpro. So the quote for one school district to do a cleaning and disinfecting one time per day was forty-five dollars per bus.
One time.
Okay, um, so just real quickly, if we were to have somebody, you know, on our, on our payroll, so say the buses come back and, and, you know, without really strictly looking at the times. Say you need somebody from seven AM to nine thirty AM, that's two and a half hours. Then you need someone from one thirty AM to four thirty PM, that's three hours. So that's five and a half hours a day at, um, say twelve seventy-five, I think it is. Seventy-five dollars a day for one person to go around like a madman on all ten buses and do the cleaning and disinfecting, um, in a short amount of, in that short amount of time. So, you know, that's, when we first thought that was the answer, then we said, wait a minute, we've got all these buses coming in. We have a short amount of time before they have to get sent back out to accomplish it. So, cost aside, and I agree with you, sixty dollars is a lot, it's the logistics. Costs aside, it makes sense for each driver, or if we had bus monitors, a bus monitor, to do that. Because then they can do it in five minutes, the buses are ready, the, um, the seats are ready, you know, there's, there's, there's kill time with disinfecting, there's drying time. We don't want the kids to get on the bus on a wet seat, um, we wanna give the product time to do its thing with the kill time. So it's, there's a, it's, there's a lot, um, you know, to it, and like I said, we can look at the guidelines, um, whether it's required or, um, or just suggested, but like we, with everything, we're trying to protect our students everywhere they come into contact. And the bus is the first place they, they board, they come on. But, you know, that is, the cost is very restrictive.
And we did offer multiple ideas to try to work with them.
So what are we looking for, for today, um, from the committee?
So today I wanted just to make everyone aware, um, of what these additional costs that we could potentially be incurring. But if it's something that you are not interested in doing, then, you know, that would be important to know.
I would like to know if it's a guideline or a recommendation first, to see le- legally, do we have to do this? You know, and then also.
They're saying it doesn't live on surfaces long, to begin with.
Right. Right, so I'm, and I have a call out too.
You know, with that, with that same thought, I mean, we'd have to, so for example, in the cafeterias, I mean, we'd have to wipe down every, uh, desk in the cafeteria and give it time to dry off, and, I mean, and we've got one custodian for each building, like, and they also have to do all the, the bathrooms probably once in a while, like, so, so do we have like a, a cleaning schedule already set? And know what Wednesday's gonna look like?
So we're working, yeah, so we're working on that with our facilities department during what the, the school day is going to be. The, um, the, the Wednesday day, you know, is going to have a different schedule, because it's going to be.
Do we know what that is yet? What, what are they gonna be doing? Cause we might need more supplies than.
We don't have that fully developed yet, correct. Um, so we have that, and that brings us to why we needed to hire extra custodians to clean off those, um, cafeteria desks or whatever the kids are eating on before the next group of kids come in.
If they were, if they, if we weren't eating in the gymnasiums, in the cafeterias, we wouldn't need that extra labor, correct?
Correct, right, cause the kids would be at their, at their desks, and I think, you know, it would be up to, maybe the students would keep their area clean, but if there wasn't another student coming in to sit at that spot, there wouldn't be that additional cleaning needed. So that's, um, that's something that our, you know, our facility staff, like I said, we have one day custodian in each building, two night custodians. So, um, they're definitely going to need some, some extra help.
I, I would just point out that we should probably consider, um, possibly, uh, consider having the kids eat in the classroom then instead. Uh, so that we can get rid of those transition periods and get rid of the, um, co-mixing of, you know, the, 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 uh, classrooms in one room. Um, and that might, you know, solve some of the problems here from, from an expense standpoint as well. Um, then I had, I had one other question, Kristen. Um, on the, um, on the expenditures, on the, like, the wipes and stuff, it says we're still awaiting a quote, is there?
So I, we said that, no, nope, so we, these are additional, um, additional wipes. So we had placed orders going back as soon, as early as early March, that we've been waiting to get in. And we've been getting them in, in small quantities. Now, our supplier, our state contract supplier, um, notified all of their customers, school districts, that if you placed an order for, you know, tons and tons and tons of wipes, we're going to limit you to what your normal monthly usage is. So if you ordered, say, six month worth of wipes, they're just gonna shoot out one month at a time.
So they're throttling it, kinda?
So we have started to, yeah, so we have started to receive some. But as we go further, and we just want to, just like anybody else in the house, if it's available, you wanna grab it. So we've been continuing to order. I have an open orders report from Next Gen Supply of things that we ordered in May and June, like disinfectant spray. That hasn't, that hasn't come in. Um, we've received all of our masks, um, we've received some gloves, but not all. We've received some wipes, but not all. We've started to receive hand soap, that was one of the first things to come back in. We started to receive hand sanitizer. We're looking for more wall-mounted dispensers, even though we've done, you know, fortunately, over the years, we had already had those installed. So we were in a better situation than most schools for that. Um, we've also ordered some of the standing sanitizer dispensers, so we can have additional ones at the entrances as kids come in. Cause that is one thing, they either have to sanitize their hands or wash their hands, so some classrooms have sinks, um, some do not. So we are trying, you know, as best we can to get these products that are in, you know, limited supply, even for, you know, big school departments. And in terms of school departments, we're not a big, um, customer, so we don't get a lot of priority. Um, yes.
Have we looked at offering overtime to some of these custodians, uh, instead of hiring?
The problem is, is it's during the school day, right? So we've got one guy on during the school day, so we'd have to bring the night guys down at ten, eleven, twelve, but we still need them on at night. Um, so, you know, that could be a consideration, but it would really, you know, ultimately, you know, for planning purposes and for, um, you know, security purposes, to have an additional person on, um, would, is, is, is optimal. Like I said, they're gonna be doing, cleaning the bathrooms maybe three times a day. They're going to be going around to all the touch surfaces. We anticipate that even our day custodian is gonna get a lot more radio calls for, I need more wipes, I need more this, I need more that, or we're out of this, we're out of that, so they're gonna be pretty, um, busy. So, and again, like a lot of things that we've seen, you know, we're all like learning as we go about this, right? We don't have anything to look back to, to say, this is what you do. So as we get into school and open school and see what our needs actually are, I mean, we're just planning, I think, in some cases, you know, as best we can for the worst, um, we wanna make sure, everybody wants to make sure that the buildings are clean, that the buildings are safe, that, you know, we have the supplies we need. So if that means like overestimating that now, that's what we're doing, um, but maybe we, we can pull back. Maybe this isn't a year-long thing, we just, there's so many questions that we don't know. Um, you know, and I, like I said, in between this, I've been trying to find the, the guidance on my phone, I have it at my desk. Um, I didn't bring it up here with me, um, on, on whether that it's cleaning is necessary between runs. But, you know, I think if we want to be a hundred percent, well, nobody can be a hundred percent, right? But if we, if we're cleaning our tables in the cafeteria, or, you know, cleaning our handrails as much as possible, that extends to the buses. Um, but it is, you know, cost pro- cost prohibitive, I agree. Um, but like I said, my point tonight is to bring these, you know, costs to your attention, so that you're aware of how this impacts the budget and can make a decision. Um, the other thing that I did want to mention, um, that I talked with that Board of Selectmen is Fairhaven High School is dismissing the majority of their students now at one o'clock, okay? They used to dismiss them at two, um, we, there, seems like they're dismissing the majority of students at one and some students at two. So when we went out to bid for our bus, um, three years ago, or two and a half years ago, we give them a schedule. This is what the times are for the morning, um, high school, middle, elementary, this is what the times are for the afternoon. So that's what they build their price per bus per day on, cause that's what we pay, they, it's a price per bus per day. So they take the cost, that's based on a driver working from, say, seven to nine thirty, and then from, um, one thirty to four thirty. Well, now Fairhaven is dismissing at one, so they've gotta call that driver in an extra hour early. But the for, the elementary dismissal is still the same time, so it's adding an extra hour to that driver's day. So for that, um, there's a cost, because that wasn't specified in the bid three years ago, because three years ago, dismissal was two o'clock. Now it's one o'clock. Yes, Sarah?
I, I did receive an email from Fairhaven High, cause Emma's in Fairhaven now, and it said that there's two dismissals. So it, is the two o'clock one for the Akushnet kids, is that why there's? Uh, nobody explained what the one and two was.
Yeah, right, so they, all we know right now is the majority of the kids, right.
That now they want two buses at dismissal, one thirty and two oh seven, something like that.
One, I think, one oh three and two oh seven, or one oh seven and two, what, either way, it's like right around one o'clock. Where they said, okay, Akushnet, you've got five buses coming out of Fairhaven High. We need four of those five buses to come here at one o'clock, and one bus to come at two o'clock. Now, the problem is, is that those buses that come out of Fairhaven High are set to shoot out to wherever across the town of Akushnet. So if at that, say we have all, all the kids most likely at one o'clock, right? So that's gonna add an hour to the driver's day, which is going to be charged to us, um, per the information that we got per our contract, when it's for, you know, they use the field trip or the, um, athletic rate, forty-eight dollars per hour, per, per bus per day. Then at, we have another bus coming out at two o'clock. But now that bus, now keep this in mind, might have students that live way down on South Main Street, the two o'clock bus, way up on Nestle's Lane, um, down on Gammons Road, Mendel Road, Nye's Lane. That bus has to cover, leave Fairhaven High, cover the whole town, and be back here at Ford. So it's.
Can we make a deal with the principal of Fairhaven High and just have? Can we make a deal with the principal of Fairhaven High and just have the students that go on the bus from Acushnet go into the, I don't know, li- library for, for the fifty minutes and then all come home at two o'clock? And for the parents that don't want their children to wait an hour, then you go pick them up?
So, Fairhaven said no.
They said no.
Yep, they said kids can't be waiting here for an hour. Um, I know there's a cost associated with this, but, um, I just recently found out about this. And, uh, they do not want students waiting for an hour for that bus, because originally Amorall said to them, we're gonna keep with our regular dismissal time and go at the two o'clock time. And that's when I received a phone call from Fairhaven and they said, we can't have kids waiting. So, there, this is a cost to Acushnet, apparently.
Um, so that we can understand that Fairhaven, when they were determining their schedule, which impacts children from our district, we were not consulted in that?
Not in the decision, no.
Cause we pay tuition, it's not, we're not regionalized, so we really don't have a say. Just like when New Bedford changed their schedule, right? That's, we had the same problem when New Bedford changed their schedule.
Right, when New Bedford changed their schedule, we had to add on another bus just to service the afternoon run, because it was running concurrently with Ford Middle School. So, the, it's, the timing is, like you said, Jen, the, the logistics and the timing is what's really tricky in all of this.
It's, it's probably an additional cost of between twenty-nine and thirty-two thousand dollars for this additional run that we didn't plan for.
Can you, can you remind me, how long have we used Amorall?
I've been here for fifteen years and we've used Amorall, they've been the most often, um, they've been the only bidder. And when they haven't been the only bidder, they've been the low bidder. And Mass General Law requires you to award the contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. So, you really have to have a, you know, a very good reason, you know, say they had a, an accident record or they didn't comply with your specifications. And I think they were here maybe five or six years before I, before I was here. So, they've been, they've been here in the town of Acushnet for, I would say, nineteen, twenty years. Um, so, in terms of funding, you know, I know these are decisions that are, these are, you know, just one of the many big daily decisions, um, that come across our, our desks, um. We do have, I, I was looking at that today and last week with our special ed out-of-district runs, and I'm gonna be firming that up with the special ed office. Um, there are some runs that we're not doing, we're not providing transportation to preschool students. Um, we're not, we didn't have summer transportation for our summer programs. So, we will have some savings in special ed transportation, as long as the students remain the same. If we have a new out-of-district student, well, then that will impact it. So, there is some transportation savings that I can tell you, as of September eighth, um, that we could use to, you know, it, for the Fairhaven, um, charges, uh, any, maybe some bus cleaning and disinfecting, um, you know, so it's, there are some other funds that we can access. And as we go along, like I said, if we, once we get our high school enrollments, maybe there's less kids attending, um, the high schools than we, than we thought at budget time. Um, maybe there's less out-of-district kids, there's already a couple of, there's already at least one kid, one student that's moved out and another student that's coming back into our building. So, that's two out-of-district placements that as of February and March, we had budgeted for them to be out-of-district, that we're not gonna be responsible for them. So, there is some, you know, surpluses in other areas, um, but it's, it's early in the, it's early in the year. And if you're the person in, in my seat that's responsible to make sure that come June thirtieth, we have enough money to pay our bills, I'm going to be very miserly in September to offer those funds out. But I want you to be aware of those, because that's gonna be, you know, a decision also, um.
I, I think my, my personal concern is, I know we can probably find the money to make this happen, you know, as good as you are with all the books, but do we really want to?
Right, is it the best use of our resources?
Is it the best use of our funds?
I wanna be sensitive to just saying, um, if it's not a requirement, we're not gonna do it, cause I, I'm not sure that's the right thing either, but I think we've got to exhaust some other, um, options to try to figure out maybe a more cost-effective way.
Agreed.
Are you talking about the disinfecting? Or about the fair, the high school extra run?
I'm talking about both.
Yeah.
Me, personally.
The disinfecting is where I was going with that, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with you there, for sure. I think we need a little bit more information on that.
Kristen.
But the extra bus run, it seems like there's, we should, I, I, I don't know if we can try to have, um, a conversation with their schools com- committee, like a joint school committee meeting, um, where we can try to negotiate some kind of, come to come, some kind of common ground or consensus around how we can deal with this in a way that fiscally it's manageable for, uh, both of our districts. Um, Craig?
Kristen, uh, what are we at right now roughly for COVID-related expenses? I know you talked about, we got three hundred and fifty thousand, but it sounds like we're spending a lot of money as well.
Yeah, so if you look at this sheet and it's, it's been updated a little bit since I just, since I submitted it for the packet, um, you can see on the first page, co- FY twenty-one expenditures made as of September third, a hundred and two thousand, okay?
That's as of right now?
As of right now. Presuming, I mean, these are all the expenditures that we made, we're hoping to get reimbursement now. Um, in the call with the town administrator today, some of it may be eligible for their CARES funds, some of it may be eligible for FEMA funds. FEMA funds are not a hundred percent reimbursable, so there's just so many questions out there. But I can tell you that these are things we, we had to do and then to move on to the next, to the next thing, um, you know.
It's in the pipeline.
So, in the pipeline would be the second page, expenditures for potential reimbursement. Um, and some of those, you'll see TBD, that's, um, awaiting the quote, I got the quote for that today, that was about thirteen hundred dollars. So, in the up, the most up-to-date, that moved to this page, okay? Um, you know, how do we, how do we know how much more we're gonna spend on electric or oil doing, to running the, you know, running our systems continuously? On September eighth, I, I don't have any, I couldn't even begin to guess, um, but I'm just putting that in there. Yeah, that's going to be probably an increased cost. Um, additional custodians, uh, that we would need. Um, the Remote Learning Academy, we haven't even talked about that yet, um, for our students to attend right now, the first semester, it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand. We have that written into our CARES grant.
That's just the first semester?
For the first semester, yes, mhm. It's, um, I think.
Was that, um, did we talk about that and it was, we were expecting it to be about a thousand of, per student? Is, is it higher than that?
So, I think it's roughly twelve hundred, um, I'm trying to, uh, we sent the PO out last week, um, but there's right around a hundred students, I think, Dr. Bailey?
A little bit more.
Yeah, a little bit more. Um, so that was, that cost there, that hundred and thirty-three, three fifty, that was what we sent the PO out based on the numbers of enrolled that we had as of, I wanna say, Octo- August thirty-first. So, there has been a few changes since then, I think, um.
And that's the, they don't, the students, just to be clear, they don't get anything other than access, correct?
I'm not sure, um.
And this is the company that won't call us back or something?
Correct, and we also, as a district, provided the Chromebooks.
So, that, yeah, it's, it's, it's a terror, it's, everything is, it's a, everything, nothing is ideal, nothing, um. So, that's a hundred and thirty-three thousand for just half of the year. We have that written into our, our reopening grant, so we've got from September to December covered. But again, go back to my first question or the first thing, remember, these grants end to December thirtieth. Um, so what do we do second semester? So, you know, and in my position, you know, I have to make sure that we come to June thirtieth, um, with a, a, a zero or a positive, not a negative. And so, my point tonight is to inform you that, you know, we have a lot of things right now that we know that's gonna make it real hard to get to that zero or that positive. Um, you know, I just wanna keep everybody informed as best we can.
And there's no, excuse me, Kristen, but there's no, there is a possibility, a very, very good chance that if COVID has continued after the fact and we're still in this pandemic, that they will extend that date for usage of the money, is that hypothetically possible?
Um, the grant right now is, is specific to December thirtieth.
And there's no extensions?
So, but then there's only two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So, if we're using a hundred and thirty-three for the TECHA, so now we've got only a little bit left. We've already used it maybe to pay some custodians or building-based subs, so even if they do extend it, we would have blown through it.
Okay.
What we don't know is what I haven't seen in talking to other business managers, we haven't seen any like, hey, there might be another round, another injection of cash come, we don't know that yet, so we only know what we, we have to deal with. Um, you know, I, I can tell you, we spent money working on our HVAC system, that's on the first page, making sure all the mo- replacing motors, belts, pulleys, um, extensive work done in both buildings. If we were to, we've purchased air purifiers, I know I had put in there. If we were gonna do it at the time for every room, right now, we're focusing on any rooms that don't have a window. So, we've gone out and purchased all those that we need. If the decision is made to outfit every room, then, then we would need more money. So, the things on the second page are kind of like unknowns right now, but some of them are, are more known than others. Um, you know, we know that, um, we, we will be charged from the bus company, they notified us this. They're putting stickers on the buses to tell the kids where the seat is. So, if you're in seat number two, there's gonna be a sticker and be above the window before the, the roof, you know, the ceiling curves. Um, they said that that's eleven hundred dollars to outfit the buses. Now, again, these were not, um, thought of in the, in the bid, right? So, every little thing that wasn't in the bid specs is gonna be an additional cost, especially in light of the disagreement, for lack of a better word, that we're having with them over what they think that we owe them for last year and what we're willing to pay for last year. So, that hasn't, um, really helped the situation along either, so.
Kristen, I'm just curious, um, what our ridership was before pandemic and what it has dropped to now? Do you have those numbers or at least?
So, not readily available, I'd have to go back and look, um, but I do know, when I looked at, you know, some buses last year, I asked Mr. Johnson to give me his bus list over the summer, so I could kinda get an idea. Some buses had forty kids on them, forty to fifty kids. Some buses had, you know, fifteen to twenty on them, depending on the route. Now, they're going to be obviously twenty-five or even less, maybe about fifteen students, cause they're skipping seats. So, the ridership, um, has gone down in, in the effect that, you know, your, kids are only riding the bus for two days. So, we're splitting it amongst, amongst the days, so that helped us out. There's no way, if we had gone back to school, everybody, every single day, that we could have gotten the kids on the buses under the guidelines, which again, the guidelines are three feet of distance, which is roughly in between the two seats, is slightly less than three feet, so that's why the guidelines say, we want you to zigzag the kids on the bus, so that there is not somebody right behind you, because there's not that three feet. It's, you know, it's a, you know, one of our school lunch director said with some of the regulations, it's like you're halfway through a jigsaw puzzle or even more, and then someone just comes and wipes it off the table, throws all the pieces up, and then you're back in a bigger, you know, problem than what you had.
I mean, the good news is, a lot of districts right now are paying for extra bus runs.
Right, so we.
We, we're not in that situation, but we have other situations that we are dealing with, the high school cost, the disinfecting cost, and we have tried to manage it to no avail. So, my suggestion would be, we have a budget subcommittee meeting next week, that we really try to firm up some decisions, but I guess my question to the committee, um, to Madam Chair, as you suggested, reaching out to Fairhaven, would you like me to formally communicate that wish through an email to the superintendent that that is the wish of the committee? Um, I can do that sooner rather than later, so that it can be done tomorrow.
Yeah, speaking for myself, I know I would be interested in a conversation like that. We've talked about it before, that there are, you know, trying to enhance collaboration between the districts, uh, since we are not regionalized. Um, how can we best, um, work together to benefit both of our needs? And so, I, I would entertain a conversation, uh, I don't know if my fellow members would be interested as well.
I agree, I don't, I don't see what the downside is to that conversation.
I would as well.
Okay, so, yeah, that would be great, Dr. Bailey, if you could set that up, thank you.
So, I will do that tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Great, okay. So, the budget subcommittee meeting will be scheduled as well, I think we're already working on that.
I think we have the schedule, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you for the heads up and the update on that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Mrs. Flynn. Okay, um.
I do have, yep, little toys, so, um, some good news tonight, some, some good news. Um, we have, we went out to, we requested quotes from, uh, contractors on the FAC one oh four contract for playground structures. And, um, the state contract allows you to forego some of the bidding requirements if you use a state contract vendor. And in this particular one, because it was going to be over ten thousand and then we needed to solicit three quotes, so that's what we did. Um, it wasn't a sealed bid, but we solicited quotes. We received quotes from, I believe, um, let me see if I can go back to my notes here, from about six or so, uh, vendors, and we were able to, yeah. So, quotes were received from six vendors, ranging from ninety-seven thousand to almost two hundred thousand, so wide range. Uh, they were given all the same specifications and clarifications. Um, the lowest quote was not accepted, um, they could not comply with some of our specifications. So, you know, when I talked about the bus contract, you can disregard it if it's not responsive or not responsible. In this case, we said very clearly in our specifications that the playground needed to support a hundred and twenty-five students at any one time. Their structure was only going to support a hundred and ten. So, that was a big issue right there, they didn't comply with the specifications. And there were some other concerns as well. Um, so after going through it very carefully and speaking with the, that first lowest bidder, uh, you know, making sure that they couldn't comply with what we wanted, um, we awarded the contract to the next lowest bidder, which is Childscapes, um, for ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. So, we've, um, put in the order, um, uh, Mrs. Gomes has communicated the colors and they've advised us that it's about five weeks, I think, to get the, the, um, equipment in and then installation will start, so that's where we're at, um.
How long will, how long will the installation take?
About two weeks, if weather permitting.
So, that's really exciting, thanks for your work on this.
So, that is good news, um, you know, and then I also, you know, and I've talked about it throughout the, throughout the course of the night, some of the things that went into the transportation, um, decision with the, with the guidance, so I won't go through those again, cause we've talked about a lot of, a lot of those things, um.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions on, in, any of that? I know it's, it's a lot.
It is, any, any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Flynn.
Thank you.
All right, uh, communication and information, uh, we've already.
I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory of what we included in the packet. I'm not sure if anybody has any question, but we just, um, I have the sheet there from Desi that we did submit our reopening plan, that's just confirmation, everything else I think is pretty self-explanatory there for your information.
Okay, any questions? All right, we do have executive session this evening, so we are going to, um, move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to con- and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contact, contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So, we're going to, um, adjourn to move into executive session, may I have a motion to do so? And not return?
No, return, we have to take a vote.
We are returning?
We are returning, this is on the MOA.
MOU, that's right.
I, I, I can't participate in this, uh, correct?
Um, I believe.
Yeah, I'd, I'd.
I, I would think no.
I don't believe I can participate in this.
Typically, you know, when we do, when we have had the situation with, um, the contract in the past, with the regular contract, a member has recused themselves that is, has a, has a family relationship.
So, do I need to leave and then hang around for a vote? I don't even think I could vote on it.
Right, I don't, you can't, yeah, I don't think you can vote.
You can be a part of the discussion.
Yeah.
No, I, oh, I can?
An executive session.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, um, we are going to adjourn to move into executive session and then return back to open session to conduct the. and then return back to open session to conduct the vote. May I make a motion to, or may I request a motion, please, to move into executive session?
So moved.
Select.
Okay, all those in favor? Or do we need a roll call, Kelly?